Mic check, one, two, three, am I being heard?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Assalamualaikum to everyone, those in the studio, and to those that are following us on the Zoom platform and on the YouTube platform. We extend to you the greetings of peace, the peace that only the Creator of us all can extend of Assalamualaikum. Thank you for joining us this early Saturday morning for our Saturday morning Talim, which means our Saturday morning study session. And if you have been joining us, you know that we are studying from the book, The Commentary on Selected Verses of the Holy Quran, documented from the teachings of Imam Muwaffaq de Muhammad and Imam Mikhail Sahir of Indianapolis, Indiana, is our facilitator. So we thank you for being here with us. And that is our first session this morning. Our second session, of course, is preparing to make it in the land of plenty. So as we get started, we always want to share with you our liability clause so that you will know our stance.
The views expressed by the host guests are their own and not necessarily the position of AM360 or the parent corporation, the Community Wide Shore Conference, CWSC Incorporated. AM360 content is intended as a community service and is not designed to provide specific personal, medical, financial, or legal counsel or other professional advice, and no liability shall extend to the host or hostesses of AM360 or CWSC. We encourage you to seek an advisor for your specific circumstance.
And we open the program with the Al-Fatiha, the opening chapter of the Holy Quran. Until that, we say, "Amin." Okay. Again, we thank you for being here with us. And this is the book that we're studying from, The Commentary on Selected Verses of the Holy Quran. Outstanding book and body of knowledge within itself. If you haven't gotten a copy, we encourage you to get a copy of this book and study it. Very insightful, and it's been very, very beneficial to us here who are participating in this study session. Okay. So our facilitator, Imam Mikhail, is not here with us yet. We are awaiting for him to join us. So if you give me one moment, I will be right back with you as we make a contact. So please, one moment. We're gonna play a video for you while we're waiting. This is a presentation from Jacksonville, Florida, Imam Yahya. So please stand by while we share that with you.
Worthy of our worship, our devotion, our prayers, accept Almighty God, Allah. And we further witness that Prophet Muhammad, to whom Allah revealed the Quran, and we say the Prophet ﷺ is the highest and choicest blessings of Almighty God, Allah be bestowed upon the Prophet, is the seal of his prophets to all humanity. As Allah says, Muhammad rahmat al-nasr, a mercy to all of humankind, all of mankind. So we thank Allah for the blessings of the Quran, that he has made us Muslims and that he has given us the Uswah, the pattern of the of the example of Prophet Muhammad to follow. And so doing make this dean of this religion easier for us to follow and adhere to. Again, we want to send our Salams and our best wishes and our best blessings, Insha Allah, to those here in the Jacksonville community. We are visiting again from the Tallahassee community, Mesra Nahav. And we are visiting here with you here today in Jacksonville. And we appreciate being with you. We want to thank Allah for you, for your Imam, for your community. And we pray Allah that we are our asset to you. And we ask you to pray for us and as we will do for you also. Again, we acknowledge your audience because you have a very vast audience here in the United States and abroad. And we just can't rattle them off like Imam Yahya does. But I know there are people from Malaysia to Africa to Saudi and not counting here in the United States who frequent the program. And we want to say to all of you, "Assalamualaikum." May Allah bless you in your journey through this life and following the religion of Al-islam. Dear friend up in Birmingham, Alabama, Imam Abdul Muhammad, Abdul Kareem, Muhammad Abdullah, excuse me. We want to send Salams to you and your Birmingham community. We know that our regional, sectional Imam Mumin tunes in. We want to give you the Salams as well as all of those individuals here in the States and here in our particular state of Florida. And we do want to extend our Salams to our community back in Tallahassee. And I appreciate them for stepping in for me. As, as I often mentioned, this is an opportunity for me to come home and to visit my family as this is my hometown. So I take advantage of having the opportunity to come visit with Jacksonville as much as I offer, as much as I can. Again, we want to keep in line with the method or the established methodology Imam Yahya does when he often does a silent prayer. And it's a good thing because it keeps us cognizant and mindful that there are people who are struggling. And oftentimes in our busy life, we forget. And we can become so engulfed and so ingrained in our own situation that we forget there are other people who need help. And we forget people who have had tragedies. You know, we've had recently this year, we've had numerous air traffic accidents. Some of them are very broadly talked about, as you know, with the ones in DC earlier this month. And there have been several since then where people have been injured in Philly and Arizona, injured and lost their lives. We want to remember those people and ask Allah to bless them, those who have passed, and bless those who are recovering and to bless their families and give them comfort. Also, the people of Gaza who are still struggling, trying to get back on their feet. The people in Sudan and Yemen and Haiti. These places are war-torn and upheaval in governments. And we don't want to forget those people. Even, even though we were having some challenges here in our country, we are still far better off than some of the other people facing oppression and difficulties in their lives. So we want to take just a minute and keep in with the established protocol that Imam Yahya does in his Jumu' to just remember those individuals in silent prayer. So I'm gonna ask you just for a second, let's, let's do that. I mean, again, thank you so much for tuning in to Adasan Worldwide Ministry today here in Jacksonville. We are going to continue the Jumu' that we started last week in Tallahassee. I didn't, I didn't get a chance to finish it. Or, well, you never can finish. But I didn't get a chance to go over some of the things that I did want to go over. So I told Imam Yahya, when he asked me what the topic was, I told him I'd just do a continuation of the one I was doing last week. And it was like, the topic was manage yourself with the Quran, manage with the Quran. And you know, we got Ramadan that is coming upon us probably in the next couple of weeks and so. And the Quran would be a very integral part of our day and our lives during that part of that, this time of the year. Even though the Quran should be an integral part of our lives all the time. But during the month of Ramadan, we are expressly tuned in and expressly interested in following, reading the Quran every day, following the Quran, making that a dynamic and more emphasized part of our lives. So that topic stuck with me and I thought I would try to at least bring out some, some pointers in, in the Quran that will help us, Insha Allah, in managing our lives. So manage yourself with the Quran. Manage yourself with the Quran. And I'm often reminded of one of the statements Imam Muhammad, may Allah be pleased with him, grant him pardon his faults and give him the highest stations in paradise, mentioned that if a human being is living his life without revelation as a guide, then that, that person is living really an uncultured, uncivilized existence. And once you start to think about it, if we are living our lives outside of guidance from God, then we are living in a hidden miss kind of a situation because everything has to follow the guidance of Allah, everything. The sun, the moon, the stars, every creature ever created on this earth has to follow Allah. Now, so those, some of those things are locked into their orbit, into their cultural orbit, into their natural, nature orbit. And they can't get out of that. But we as human beings can. We can, as the Quran said, we can deliver ourselves from the highest of the highs to the lowest of the lows. So we can move outside of the confines of being human being. And we can actually sink so low that we get off a human plane. But revelation keeps us grounded. As Isa ibn Ma'udiam told his people, that to follow him, that he is the way, the truth, and the light, to follow his guidance, that he came as a light of the world. And Prophet Muhammad ﷺ told us that if we follow the Quran and His Sunnah, that we will go straight. So again, pointing us back to revelation, pointing us back to the guidance of Almighty God. So then we are commanded to work on ourselves first. We have to work on yourself. You know, when, again, with like airplane and we'll bring this up for an example. They tell you if you're traveling with a small child and the oxygen level drops, then the oxygen mask comes down. They say, put it on yourself first, then the child. Or take care of yourself first, then the lesser person or the weaker person. So then the idea is then that we have to work on self. We have to be able to manage self first. So in the Quran, in Surah Al-Tahrir, this is the 66 surah. And it's the sixth verse. So that, that idea, you know, 666. This is, this is in the Quran in that particular verse. And we know that there's some references to that in, in in Bible language, talking about 666, count the number of the, I think it says, count the number of the beasts or is that of a man and it's 666. And you know, there's a lot of symbolism with that. And, and we were taught a lot of those things in, in the past to take the mysticism out of it. You know, religion shouldn't be mysticized. Religion should be a simple pattern by which we follow life. And that's why God sent us messengers. He sent Muhammad, he sent Jesus, he sent Moses, he sent Noah, he sent Ibrahim, Lot, he sent all these messengers to humanity to teach them how to incorporate revelation in their lives to manage their lives. Thus, I go back to Imam Muhammad's statement that if we were living a life outside of revelation, then it's an uncivilized, uncultured, a hidden miss kind of existence. So this whole idea of checking self first, we have to check first with the best medicine and the best guide and that which will give us the best result over time. Yes, because sometimes things take time. You know, we have to work on things. So Allah says in the Quran, and when you are free from the immediate work that you're doing, still continue to work hard. But keep your attention on Allah. So it points us right back to revelation, points us right back to guidance from God. So then if you're gonna manage yourself in the best way, and particularly us as Muslim, if you're gonna manage your life in the best way, because you have to manage your life. Life is, we're, we're all managers. Even though you might not have the official title, we're all managers. That your own self, that your, your own human nature obligates you to do certain things, you have to manage it. If you get thirsty, you have to go get water. If you get hungry, you have to get food. And you have to get the right type of food. So you have to know how to manage the things that your physical body calls for. You have to also know how to manage what your spiritual appetite calls for and your intellectual appetite calls for. So we're all managers, whether you want to be or not. You're a manager, Allah has put you in control. And Allah says, "And for the one who frees the soul, he is the most successful one." So Allah tells us in the Quran and this, this, this surah 666, Surah Al-Tahrir, the 66th chapter in the Quran, is like this title of the prohibition that, that we have a responsibility to, to take care of self first. And then there's a, there's a specific way that we have to do this. So Allah says in, in this particular Ayat, let me get to it, it's the sixth Ayat in this particular chapter, chapter 66 again. And it starts out with this, "Yeah, ayuhan, yeah, yeah, ayuhan, yeah, ayuhan ladina, amanu." Yeah, ayuhan ladina, amanu. Okay, "For those who believe," oh, you who believe. So it's giving you, it's giving you a a model, a standard, a prerequisite, that you have to be a person of faith first. Because if you're not a person of faith, you're not gonna believe in the Quran. If you're not a person of faith, you're not gonna believe in your Bible or your Torah. So Allah tries to establish something first for you. Yeah, "Oh, you who believe." Now, when you came into this life, you came into this life as a believer. You didn't come into this life as someone who disbelieved in God. You were totally dependent, totally dependent on God. Why? Because you were totally dependent on your mother. Your mother created, was creation, creation of Allah. You were totally dependent upon the methodology to get you to the point where you can be born into this world. You had nothing to do with that. But you were dependent upon the process. So God just reminds us, that's all, it's just a reminder to the sensible person. Now, we're talking about managing. Now, you gotta manage your life, but you gotta understand it before you can manage it. You just can't manage if you don't understand it. So God protects us right back here. Allah says, "Oh, you who believe, oh, you believe, quln en fusiqum." What? Protect what? "En fusiqum," protect yourselves, and your families from what? Protect yourselves and your families from the fire. So Allah's given us this, and it says, "Narren", meaning that this is a perpetual fire. It's just not a fire that's gonna be a one-day fire. Allah says, "This is a perpetual situation that's gonna be what? Either a detriment for you or it could be a benefit from you, for you." But Allah is saying in this particular Ayat, "Aula," to protect, to protect yourself from it. So then we know Allah is giving us a warning that this is a fire that could be dangerous. So Allah says, "Oh, you believe," calling you back first, "you who have a conscience, awareness of, of, of your relationship with the one who created you and gave you life." Allah says, "Oh, you who believe, protect yourself." Remember I say, you gotta check on yourself first. He said, "Protect yourself and your family." To protect yourself and your, whom your family, from what? Narren, from this perpetual situation that can cause you problems if you don't follow the guidance that God has given you. So, "Oh, you believe," I'm calling you back to what's gonna give you life, is gonna, what's gonna give you the proper methodologies to manage your life. I'm calling you back to that. And Allah says, "Then, but this is gonna be something that's gonna cause you fire, that's gonna cause you great harm. So you need to protect yourself. And then protect those whom you are acquainted to, related to, or you may even be over them." Because the parent is over the child, right? The parent has to manage its life and the child's life to a point. Prophet Muhammad ﷺ said of the, of the child, "Play with them until they're seven. Teach them idad, adab, teach them manners until they're 14. And when they're 21, be different." You know, after that point, because they have to know how to manage their life for themselves at that point. Because you have given them all of the prerequisite steps. So Allah says, "Oh, you who believe, then protect yourselves and your family from a fire." Allah says, "It is fire, it's, this is a fire, wa qaula, wa qaula duha el nasr." That this is a fire who has what? Who has fuel, and this fuel is what? This fuel is wa al-hajra. This is a fuel that burns stone. This is a fuel that burns stone. Allah said, "This is, this is a fuel, oh, you believe, save yourselves, protect yourselves and your family from a fire whose fuel is nasr, men." And Allah says, "In stone." What is Allah's gonna call, men and stone? It's gonna burn men up, it's gonna burn stones up? This, what's, what type fire is this? The fire, the fire of unchecked, now, remember, we say, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta manage your life. And this is 666, this, this life that we're talking about in this particular Ayat. You gotta manage your, your physical life. This life that we have here, this physical life here, you gotta learn how to manage that. But then after your physical life can take you to a point, then Allah allows the intellect to come on. Just look at the life of the baby. When the baby come here, that baby is all physical. All he wants to do is eat, sleep, poop, be clean, eat, sleep, poop, be clean. That's all a baby does, that's his existence. And it grows to a point to where now it becomes a scientist because this curiosity takes over. And he wants to know what this is, and he's sticking in his mouth. And he wanna know what that is, he stick his finger in the plug. He wanna know, so then the, the higher intellects have to protect it from itself until it, its intellect can grow. So it's responsible now for growing intellect. But then once it gets to a point, it knows that my intellect can only take me so far. There's something still missing. So then I want that something that's missing, I wanna connect with my Lord who created me. Why you put me here? Why you put me in this family? Why am I here? What is my duty? What is my job on this earth? Where did I come from? Then he's turning to his Lord, trying to find answers, just like our Prophet Ibrahim did. He turned to find answers from, from the one who created him. So then we have to move these whole three movements now. So then we are now have to understand that, that we have to manage this physical life that we have. Because if we don't manage it, somebody with a, with a better knowledge than us or someone who might not have our best intentions in heart can manage, own, manage this physical life and take advantage of me. They could make me smoke reefer. They can make me start cocaine. They can make me drink alcohol. So Allah says that, that those things are devices from Satan. So we should stay away from them, a revelation again. I know some of my, my, and this is not a jab at them. I say, well, Jesus turned water into wine, you know. So when we, when we get in this conversation about drinking alcohol, I never saw Jesus drunk, I never saw him take any drink of alcohol. Now, they lied on the prophet, Noah said he was drunk and naked in front of his children. No, the, no, that, that, the prophets of God don't get sloppy drunk and do that. That's, that's not, the Quran does not see Noah in that light. So I'm just gonna clear that up. We don't see the prophets like that. Alcohol and toxins, toxicants are haram for us. We're to stay away from those things. Why? Because it messes up the physical life that I'm in charge. Allah says, "Save yourselves and your families from the fire." And this fire burns what? Men and stone. They said, "Burns men and stone." So men, Imam Muhammad gave us this, this analogy, said, "Man means mine." Man means mine, all men have an intelligence. And all men have an intelligence that Allah has given them and they are to put their intelligence in the earth and bring out the best of the earth for his success, subsistence. And Allah says, "And I put you in the earth for to get your livelihood for a time." So if I don't develop myself and my intelligence, then someone else can come in and implant or supplant an intelligence in me that will help me operate against my own human nature. So then we have to what? Manage ourselves with revelation. For us as Muslim, we manage our lives with the Quran. And again, it's coming up, Ramadan is coming up. A good exercise for us to learn how to manage our life. But you first have to, the first fight during Ramadan is a fight to manage a physical life. Because man, you get hungry, you get thirsty. So we're having a wrestle with that thing to manage it. Why? Because Allah has already told you that you are a manager and you're gonna be in control. But I can't just stop there, just like the baby. The baby doesn't stop in that physical situation like that. If he stops, they call it retarded. No, the baby has to grow and the intellect kicks in. And the intellect has to be fed. And God says what? "And let there be light." This is, this is, this is Bible talk now. God says, "Let there be light." They say, "Darkness covers the earth, the void and darkness." And God said, "Let there be light." Let the light of man's intelligence come on. And when his intelligence come on, he will see that he has all of these things in the God. And when his intelligence come on, he will see that he has all of these things in the garden that he has to be managing. He's been asleep, he sat down on the job, he's not managing the life that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala put him in. So Allah says, oh, you believe, save yourselves and your family from a fire. And this is a dangerous fire, because this fire, this particular fire, has burned out of you your own human drive for excellence. Your own human drive for motivation, for development, all of us have that. But if we allow another fire to come in and supplant the nature that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala put in us, then we will go away. You ever seen a fire when you put water on it, it just? Well, we don't want that to happen to our fire, the fire of, the fire of our desire to be children of Adam. Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala said, that he has made all of you noble. I made all of the sons and daughters of Adam noble. So if Allah is giving me a nobility, if Allah made me noble and made me a manager, then what am I gonna manage? He gave me something to manage, so he gave me life, so Allah said, oh, you believe, calling you back, say you believed in me when you were born. You never saw a baby come out, come out the mother's womb, saying, what he brought me out here for, I don't wanna come out here, you should have left me where I was. Babies don't do that. They, they, they're, they're frightened, because you took them out of a comfortable environment. But after they get acquainted with the new surroundings, oh, man, that baby's in love. He falls in love with the mother, he falls in love with the other relatives as they come around, and he gets acquainted with it. And you never see anybody say, I don't wanna be out here, mama, can I go back up in the womb, I wanna get back in. You don't see people doing that. No, that's unintelligent, you know, go try to go back into the womb and, and seek comfort in there. Man seeks comfort in developing his nature and developing himself in the earth that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala put him in. So Allah says, oh, you who believe, save yourselves from a fire. A fire that tries to, to mold you into a certain shape, to put you into a certain shape of subservience, of laziness, of irresponsibility, of decadence. See, that's a fire. Allah says what? He created men from what? Mintine, from clay, don't you know, if you wanna, the potter, when the potter's making something? We used to sing this song when I was in, I was in a choir, I think I told y'all that in church. We was, the song was, have that on way, it's a have that on way, Lord, this is talking about God, have that on way. Thou, I am, thou art a potter, I am the clay. Mold me and shape me after your will, while I am waiting, yielded and still, I ain't fighting. I'm waiting for you to mold me into the shape. Now, once it's, once it's molded, we have to do something with that. So the potter takes that thing and puts it in what they call a kil. That's what they call it, a kil, and it fries it up, heats it up. And once this thing is fired up and heat, that's fire, right? But Allah says, save yourselves from a fire. But we took this beautiful piece of pottery that we made, and we put it in a kil. So we're killing it, what? We're killing off something to produce something. Prophet Muhammad says, what? Die so that you can live. Die to that life, as Isa ibn Maryam told his people, deny yourself. You know, if you wanna be saved, deny yourself, Jesus Christ, we call, we say Isa ibn Maryam, for those of you who, who are not familiar with the language. He said, deny yourself, pick up your cross and follow me, right? Prophet Muhammad says, die so that you can live. So you have to die to the life that has taken you off track. You have to die to the fire that have put you in a certain mold and lock you into that mold. Because once you put it in the kil, the kil takes all of the, takes all of the water out of it and hardens that thing. And you can't mold it no more, only thing you can do is break it and throw it away and start all over again. Well, we wanna be in the mold that Allah, Allah says what? That he has created the man in, in the best of modes. In the best, now, this is all from the Quran. This is all the Quran, so we wanna manage our life, we have to know how to take that, we have to know how to take the, the tools of the Quran. And work on the systems that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has given us to make them work in their optimum capacity. So we're working on the physical system, then we know that there are certain things that we can do, or should do and not do. So we don't let the fire, the intellect, fire, fire is like the intelligence. And then again, we thank Allah for Imam Muhammad, who gave us a lot of insights onto religious language. The fire is like the intellect, the intellect can take something and burn it and make it down to its rudimentary elements. That's what fire does, but Allah says, save yourselves from the fire that will burn men and stone. So this fire, Allah is saying, that save yourself from, meaning the fire, remember they call in the, in the, in the, in the Bible? They said, Satan, Lucifer was the, the, the angel of fire, angel of light? Meaning he was a disobedient one, and he took his fire, his intellect, his knowledge, his ability to break things down. His ability to uncover things, you know, if you, if the scientists give you, they would give you a compound. When we were, we were in science class, you know, this is one of my, one of my kids, high school friends that we grew up with. You know, the science class, right, they give you, the teacher would give you, I think they called it a beaker, and they would have certain compounds in it. And they want you to tell them, tell me all of the elements in this compound. Well, you had to do something in order to get that. You had to take that thing and put, put it under what they call the Bunsen burner, I think, to turn the burner on and let the fire happen. And then you had the little thermometer in there, that once certain things reach a boiling point, you say, oh, that's alcohol. That's this, that's this, because why? Because we knew the elemental compounds of those things, and once they start to, to display themselves, we, we logged it at that point, so we knew what it was. So that's, that's fire has the ability to do that. So Allah says, save yourselves and your families from the fire. And that fire can burn men and stone. It will burn men who Allah has established, and Allah has established us, like the established Adam. But if we don't remember. If we stop being believers, stop following the guidance of Allah, then we, we open ourselves up to the fire from others who might not have our best intentions in heart. And then they cause us to corrupt ourselves, they cause us to fall away from our own human nature. They cause us to fall away from our own guidance that will give us the best benefits of the life. So Allah says, save yourselves from that, because that fire will burn men, and that fire will burn stone also. It will burn stone, and this, this word for, for stone, it, and this is, this, these are definitions from the dictionary of the Quran. This, this word stone, it's something that's hard, but one of the definitions is that it's a hard-hearted person. And this, 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 I'm not making this definition up, and say, like a crafty political person. Now, let's think about that, Allah says, that, that this fire can consume them. Now, if the fire's consuming them, when, what is this fire? The fire of arrogance, the fire of self-absorition, the fire, in the Quran it says, meaning this, this fire has got you so arrogant that you can't even see your own arrogance. Just that arrogant, Allah said, that fire can burn you too. And the bad thing about it, that they think that fire is good for them. But if Allah said, that fire burn men, and it'll burn the hard-hearted, stone-hearted. So Allah says, save yourself from that, and save your families from that, don't let them fall victim to that. So dear people, again, we have to understand. That Allah has given us revelation of the Quran, and again, the revelation of the Quran for us, talking now directly as Muslims. To help us manage this physical existence we have, help us manage how we use the fire of our intellect. Because if we don't take out the fire of our intellect and use it properly, then we can cause ourselves and our others problems. So Allah says, save yourself and your families. So now, we are looking to fat to self and those who are in line with us. And if we don't do that, then we will be, we also will be guided when we start to try to develop that spiritual aspect of us. Trying to connect to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, we can be misguided, we can be taken astray. And that's why we pray in Surah, Surah, Allah, don't let me go like the people who went dogged, and I don't wanna go astray. I don't want someone to influence my decisions with a fire that will burn and kill and take me off the path. So Allah said, then what? We would give to you this. And this is, this is very significant that we, that we understand this, and again, we're talking about the Quran now. And this is in the, the second Surah of Quran, just very, very brief understanding, and we'll talk about it. And again, managing your life, managing yourself with the Quran. Surah to al-Baqarah, in just the first five ayats, and then we'll briefly speak on it. Again, back to the believers, now, we're talking about managing our life with the Quran. Well, Allah says, this is a book that has no doubt, that book, the Quran, has no doubt, no crookedness, no guesswork. So now, we're setting a parameter for what we're gonna use to manage our lives. So Allah's giving us this, Allah said, this is a book, in this book is guidance without doubt for what? Who then, taking us right back to this idea of, hey, I got to trust God. I've got to trust what Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has given me, because if I don't trust the Quran, if I don't trust the guidance Allah gave for Muhammad, I'm not gonna follow that. So then how am I gonna save myself from a fire? How am I gonna save myself from something that will burn men who think they know everything? Burn men who have become so disconnected from their own humanity. There's some people that are so far connected from their own humanity, that you would call them a devil when you see them. Said, man, a cold-hearted devil. And I said, this, 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 this word, hazara, hazara, it means, means to be like a rock, something cold, something hard. People become people, can become like that, can become a wholehearted devil. So Allah says, I'm gonna remind you that this is a book, in this book is guidance for those who are, they fear Allah, they want to follow what God says. And further, it says. That they believe what? What they believe, I can't see that now. Allah says, they believe, what do we believe that we can't see? If Allah is telling me this now, again, remember the topic that you're managing your life. You have a life that you're managing, you can't see everything in your life. Can you sit here with me and map out ten years from now in your life, with every second, every minute, every hour we're taking in your life? Can you sit down and write this out and say, okay, tomorrow, this is what's gonna happen in my life? And you go down, can you do that? No. But Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala says, they believe, that they believe. That they believe in the unseen, don't, isn't your potential unseen? You don't know it's your potential, but you, you, you think you can do it? Your potential is unseen, but if you don't believe that Allah has given you potential, or if you let another fire come in and convince you that you're worthless. That you have no potential, that you have no worth, that Adam, when Allah said that you were sons and daughters of Adam, and that he made you noble. Well, he excluded you from there, you weren't talking about you. So now you've let another fire burn to burn your innate blessing, your innate inheritance away from you. So Allah says, then you don't believe in the unseen. Why? Because you don't believe in the potential that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala said that he gave all of us. And Allah says, he created you excellent, made you from the best stuff, all of you. He didn't just say some of you, he said, all of you, made you from the best stuff, under the best mold. So if you're gonna manage your life, then you gotta, you gotta be dedicated to the guidance that Allah has given you to manage your life. If you don't trust in the Quran, you're not gonna let the Quran manage your life. So Allah says what? They believe in the unseen, they're steadfast in prayer, and they work, they work with what Allah has provided for them. Allah provided your intelligence, Allah provided your drive, Allah provided your motivation, so you have to work with that. You don't work with my intelligence, my drive, that's for me. Allah says, save yourself first, so then work on yourself first, use what Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has given you, and know that it is excellent. That you have the ability to do anything, manage anything in this life, you have that ability. So if you wanna manage your life, then do it with the Quran. Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has given us everything we need in the Quran, and given us the motivation to use it, and the motivation to make it come to fruition, everything we touch. And if it doesn't develop, if it doesn't come to fruition, then, then we keep trying, we keep trying, we keep trying. And then once we hit the mark, then we look for another mark to try, that's the children of Adam, that's how they manage their lives. Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala said, but be steadfast in prayer, meaning that always turn back to the source. Always turn back to the source, isn't that what Neo was trying to do, Neo was trying to get to the source. He said, man, I, I got it on order for me to understand this thing, I gotta get to the source. Neo was trying to get to the source, so that's what we're trying to get back to the source, and Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has given us the direction on how to do that. So Allah says, that they spent, they are steadfast in prayer, and they worked, they managed, they worked. They struggled with what we have given them. Whether Allah says you are lightly equipped or heavily equipped, you go and you work. So if you wanna save yourself, work with what Allah has given you. You wanna save your families, work with what Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has given you. But the first thing you got to do is rely on the best information that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has given us, and he has given us the best information. Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam said, his miracle, the Quran, is that I'm gonna leave it with you, and I'm gonna leave with you. The Uswah, my pattern that I do, how I show you how to follow, because I'm gonna leave them two things with you. If you do that, then you're gonna be able to manage your life. And then for those of you who are present, this is in his last Quran, for those of you who are present, take it to those who are not here. Because they might have a better understanding of it. So look at the history, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to, to end this right here, but look at the history of this thing. The Prophet Muhammad instructed those who were there to take it and give it to those who weren't there. Because they might have a better understanding, now, do you think he was talking about the people who just overslept and then make it? Maybe, yeah, but look at it in the history of, if I'm gonna come fourteen hundred and some odd years after Prophet Muhammad. How is the Quran gonna help me manage myself? If the prophet wasn't saying, keep it in the annals of man's life and history, so man to understand how to manage his life with this Quran. Because they might understand better how to manage. They might understand better how to interact with the creation and get better results, better products, better ingredients from this earth that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala pull us in, than we are getting now. So Allah says, and he taught man the use of the pen, taught man that which he had not been knowing. And don't we know a lot now that we didn't know fourteen hundred years ago? Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala told us that, so if you wanna manage your life, use, use revelation, makes a lot of sense to me, use revelation. And know that we have to use it as a tool, so we wanna use a wrench to take off the nut and the bolts, we have to use the Quran to manage our lives in that sense. So we pray as we sit for this first body of the Hukba, that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala bless us with understanding, and that he help us and forgive us our faults. And let us pray and ask Allah for his forgiveness, adzim. I might have to extend this another jumah, it's just. The Quran is very, very. the Quran is very, very, uh, loaded. And you know, you can, you can intend to do and be talking about one thing and then Allah, God send you in another direction. So I'm gonna, um, in this part of the, the hookba, we, we're going to talk about some things that are kind of, you know, it's kind of pressing on our, on our lives and on our minds that, uh, and particularly in our country, you know, we're going through some turbulent times, uh, to say the least. Uh, we are being inundated, uh, overwhelmed with, with, uh, people who think that they are above, above checks. Above, uh, you know, when you, when you get so, and I go back to this word in, in the Quran, and it talks about iblis, yeah. Astakbaro. And in the way that word is used in the form of, and I heard Imam Kazem talk about this. He said, that iblis was so arrogant. That Allah saying this in, in the Quran, when he talks and uses that word, that his arrogance was such that he couldn't even see his own arrogance. Allah says, you give rope in your trespasses. So don't, so don't think that just because people have the upper hand, uh, 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 what appears to be the upper hand, that they, that they will go unchecked. And don't think that they can rule over your life to the point to where they can get you, where they can crush your spirit. Allah says, though you believe, fear Allah as Allah alone should be feared. And don't die unless you Muslim. Now, the whole world should hear this, particularly in America. It's, I don't want to be no Muslim. You ain't got to be Muslim. But you should be submitting to God. Don't give your spirit away, don't give your life energies away. Don't give your life dedication and, and, and fortitude away because somebody challenged you. And it seems that they got all this power. And you buckle under like a weak-kneed politician. You buckle under and give up on your principles and your morals and your, 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 your righteous standing where you know you should be standing. And you give up because someone threatened your position. Or someone threatened your money. Someone threatened your political power. Look, in the Quran, this is in Surah the Taubah. It's in the ninth surah, and this is the surah of forgiveness, right? Ninth surah in the Quran, 51st ayat. And it starts with this, qul. So now Allah said, I want you to say this, qul. Now, I'm not telling you to say this, but this is the Quran, qul. Someone, somebody say, hey, say this, that means somebody's giving you a direction, right? I want you to say this. If they say this, you say this, right? You know, the parents, you say, the children come and say, Mama, he said this. Okay, well, be you, but he said that to you, then you tell him that I'm not thinking about you. That's what I want you to say. I hope that's what you say, don't, don't, don't tell them that other stuff. Uh, but, you know, so we're telling, we're saying, say. Allah says, I want you to say this, it's emphatic, say this, qul. It says, qul. Len yusibaana, illa me kattebalahu lana. It says, say to them, nothing, land, nothing will happen to us. Except, illa, except what Allah kattebalahu, what Allah has already set up. It says, set up or, or decreed, um, or put in place for us. Allah said, you say that to them. So I'll take your job away, I'll take your contract away, I'll take your, dude. Nothing can happen to me except what Allah has already decreed, dude. Maybe Allah didn't want me to have that. Maybe you got something else from me on the backside. I can't kiss your ring, man, and bow down to you and kiss your toes like you something special? No, Allah says, qul, tell them jokers. Qul. Len yusibaana, illa me kattebalahu lana. You tell them jokers, nothing can't happen to me, dude, except what Allah has already said could happen. And it says to us, lana, us, so this is talking about all of us. Now, we're managing your life with the Quran, okay? We're managing your life with Revelation. Now, everybody can have, everybody can do this part. This, the Quran, Allah said, the Quran, uh, um, Prophet Muhammad was a mercy to all of humanity. Rahmatullah. And what did Prophet Muhammad bring as his miracle? He said he brought the Quran. So Prophet Muhammad was a mercy to all the, the, the systems of knowledge, uh, ala mi. Uh, he was a mercy to all human beings. Then what he brought should be the mercy to all of us, just the same, right? He said, I'm gonna leave you the Quran and my uswa. So if, if he left it for us, he left it for them too. So Allah says, say to them, tell them, nothing, joking, look, you, nothing can happen to me except what Allah wills. So it says, uh, qul. Len yusibaana, illa me kattebalahu lana. Huwa maalana. Huwa maalana, why? Because Allah is the one who's going to protect me. I don't care how many guns you have. You think your guns can stand up against Allah? Look, man, Allah can send just a little bit of wind that you can't even see and bring you to your knees. Allah can send the rain, just some water that disguised your waters, you would put in a glass and put that water in an abundant motion and make you buckle to your knees. The same water that you would put in your bathtub. Allah can, they say trouble the water, Allah can trouble the water to the, to the point to make your knees buckle. So Allah says that, that Allah, he is the one that can protect us. Allah is our protector. That huwa maalana, wa ala lahi fele yatta wa kili ala muhminuna. He is our protector, therefore. Since we already know that Allah is our protector now, we've already established it. Allah told me what to say. I know this Allah is going to protect me, I'm not worried about it. Allah didn't say, don't put your head in the sand. You didn't say that, that Prophet Muhammad SAW say what? Trust Allah, but tie your camel, right? Okay, so in 2025, turn, trust God, take the keys out the car. Okay, hold your keys in the car, trust Allah, take your purse out the car, because there's some thieves running around, okay? And, and in fact, when I say thieves, I'm going to send this, this, um, picture out. Uh, my daughter sent it to me, there's a, there's a sister, um, uh, moving around in messiahs, um, dressed like Muslims, she comes to the messiahs and she, when she goes around and steals from the sisters' purses and stuff in the bag. So y'all be, be mindful of that. Um, I'll, I'll send it to you, I'll, I'll, but, um, that's real, right? Trust in, trust in Allah, but hold on to your pocketbook. So he says, he is our protector, so therefore, we already know that Allah is protecting us. So Allah says, so let the believers put their trust on Allah. So you trusting, is he 45, 47? Think he 47 now, right? He's 45, he's 47, 47. I'm not going to call his name, y'all know who I'm talking about. You, you going to trust him? Or you going to trust Allah? You going to trust Mr. Electric Car? Or you going to trust Allah? You going to fear them or you going to fear Allah? I mean, this is real talk, because this is real stuff. Allah said, oh, you believe, save yourselves and your families from the fire. There's a fire burning. We got to save ourselves from that. We got to save our families from that. It's not a good fire, because this fire wants to kill off stuff. He wants to kill off people in need. He wants to kill off people who, who are lesser than them, who are more destitute. They want to kill off the, no, we don't want to do that. Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala say, he made this whole planet, this whole earth, everything in it for us, everything in it for the sons and daughters of Adam. So you have just a much of a responsible and obligated part to this planet, this earth. And Imam Muhammad called it, this home, this earth, our shared freedom space. And I, and I had something I was going to read on it, man, but it's getting kind of late in the jummas. But it's in, in fact, let me read it real quick, because I wanted, I thought it was pertinent. It's in this book called, um, For Those Who Thirst, commentary by Imam Muhammad. Uh, because it's talking about, it's, it's talking about the spirit of faith. And I'm going to read it real quick, then I'm going to close out. And it, he said, uh, in the spirit of dimension never solely is, is, is our control. Nobody can control the spirit of dimension alone. You can only control it with Allah. And when he begins to guide you in the way of inspiration, intuition, you can't say, I'm going to use my intuition to figure it out. It doesn't work that way. It comes, but you just don't know when it's coming. You can just hunger for it. Jesus said, knock and don't be impatient, knock and someone will answer. The door will be open if you just continue to knock. Don't give up. Have faith and keep trying and receive help for, for your good intentions of your mind. You want to develop your mind for that particular purpose? You want to serve a particular cause and you need more help? You need more light on the subject matter. Don't give up. He said, keep knocking, your knocking on the door will help. You want someone to answer it. We do it with prayer. We also do it with our conscious mind. We talk directly to Allah as though he is there before us like a person. Eventually you'll get the answer if you keep a purified intention. This is, this is in the book, For Those Who Seek, the commentary by Imam W D Muhammad by, um, my friend, you know, Ronald B Shahid. So dear people. What, what I'm trying to get us to do is this, you know, I know things get a little rough and then things get a little disconcerting, but it wasn't, no. Nothing can come to you but what Allah deems for you. As the prophet said, if armies got together to hold something back from you, they cannot hold it back from you if Allah intended for you to have that. So let us be strong, let us stay informed, let us stay in the fight, and let us stay committed and know that nothing can happen to us except what Allah has already decreed for us. He is our protector. Remember that Allah is the protector of the believers. So therefore, believers, put your full faith, put your full trust, put your full reliance on Allah. Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, manage your life with the Quran. Manage your life with what Prophet Muhammad SAW left us and we will be okay. Allah says, early after difficulty comes relief. Said it twice, early after difficulty comes relief. But when you are free from that relief, don't go have a potty. Don't go shake the booty, no. When you are free from that relief, you still go keep working. Find you another job. If you ain't no job, make a job. But keep your attention on Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. So we thank Allah for the Quran, we thank him for the blessings and life example of Prophet Muhammad SAW. Thank Allah that has made us Muslims bound to his will in the religion of Islam. That he bless us, bless our families, our brothers, our friends. That he pardon us of our faults, have mercy on us and stand with us, oh Allah, as we stand against the people who stand against faith. I mean, God comments a lot to Muslims.
Alhamdulillah, very, very clear, concise message. And that was Imam Rashad Mujahid of Tallahassee. And we have many Imams throughout the country. And this is my first time hearing a presentation from, um, Imam Rashad Mujahid of Tallahassee. And I'm going to have to find more of his presentations uh, because it's so clear and concise and a, uh, such a refreshing and refresher uh, for the human being. And I'm gonna, uh, uh, Sister Martha, who is a Floridian, uh, Aslala, welcome to you and welcome to the show.
Waalaikum Assalam, and yes.
You've been holding back the treasures.
You know, um, along with Imam Rashad Mujahid, uh, here at the Florida, I, I'm so, we're so blessed, praise be to Allah, and we haven't taken it for granted. Uh, the Florida Conference of Muslim Americans, uh, Imam Rashad Mujahid and, uh, Ronald B Shahid, Imam Ronald B Shahid. They were both the first, uh, conveners for Florida, uh, some years ago. And then, uh, Delese Uma, your husband, was the next convener after them. And then Imam Kareem, Abdul Kareem Ali, uh, of, of the Tampa Bay Area Muslim Association. He became the convener. And then there was a pause. And that, that pause has a lot to do with what he was referencing, uh, the Imam was referencing just now. That, uh, we had to, we had to recognize that we were following, I, I say we, and I'm speaking for myself, definitely, tradition, with the habit, I, I would say habit, not tradition. Habit of what we have formed out of the belief system, we had not uh, clearly defined what it was that individually we were about. Collectively, we were okay, we were Florida. Uh, it wasn't Florida Conference of Muslim Americans, but it was the same entity, same, uh, identity as far as the Muslim African Americans following the leadership of Imam Wati, uh, identifying with the leadership of Imam Wati Muhammad, Rahimul Aholay. And, uh, Imam Ronald B Shahid went on, you know, they were there in Tallahassee, uh, college. And Imam Ronald B Shahid moved, I believe, I, I can't re clearly, but anyway, the idea is Imam, uh, Abdul Haq Muhammad came to the area and lodged there in Fort Myers. And began, he, he went one by one, and this is what, how close direct action is with Imam Wati Muhammad's, uh, leadership guiding us through it. Imam Abdul Haq interviewed all of us, one by one, pretty much group by group throughout the state. And then evolved the, uh, Florida Conference of Muslim Americans extending from what it had been and re, reinvigorating ourselves. And our children, right in that, in that brief pause, and when I say brief pause, maybe five years, our children then became, we didn't realize that our children were, it, it, it caused a disassociation. We can really go in history and point to that period. I remember my, my son saying to me, because there was difference of opinions in the, in the masjid. And certain actions were taken, and our children pleaded with us. Don't separate, don't, can't y'all make up? I mean, here are the children saying this. But we couldn't see it. We couldn't see it with, with, because they didn't know all the intricate matters. And so I won't expose all of that. The point being is, uh, Imam Ronald B Shahid, I mean, Ronald B Shahid, yes, Imam Rashad Mujahid, still came, is living here in Florida, in Tallahassee, uh, is, as of today, with the Florida Conference of Muslim Americans. And he's on the, I believe, the governance committee. So I'll stop right there. Thank you so much, Assalamualaikum.
Waalaikum Assalam, Alhamdulillah. You know, um, that history is much appreciated. And, you know, sometimes in living day. And, you know, sometimes in living day to day, and facing life's challenges, we can begin to focus on the struggle. We focus on the struggle instead of focusing on the answer to the struggle. You know, and, uh, the presentation that we just heard redirected and redirects the focus to the solution for the struggle, to this, to, to become more solution oriented. And not to just focus on the struggle. Because, you know, scripture teaches us that we were born into toil and struggle. Right? So the struggle is good in its nature. To struggle and to strive is good in its nature because it's promoting growth and development. For example, we watch a baby struggling to learn to walk. And they'll stand up and seek their balance and just stand there. And, and say, I can stand up straight. I can balance myself. And it'll take a small step, say, yeah, I could do that, you know? Then they'll try to take another step and they'll fall on their little bottoms and, uh, but they're not defeated. They get right back up and they continue to struggle. And the balance becomes greater and they can take more steps. And before you know it, that baby is walking. So this is a sign of the, the good struggle. And they are so proud of themselves when they, uh, can take those steps and it's like they just standing there waiting for your applause. Because they realize they have accomplished something that, uh, they struggled to achieve. So struggle in its essence and in its nature is a good thing. And, and, and we have to allow ourselves the development that that struggle is producing. Whatever the struggle is, is a good struggle to get us into a better position in life. And so we continue to do that, but sometimes we take it in a negative way. And, uh, and look at a struggle as a setback that we just want the reward of whatever the situation is and not to do the work, uh, to help produce the character and the, uh, fortitude that that struggle will represent for us. So we, we get focused on that. And so instead of the solution for the struggle, you know, so, uh,
I want to mention one thing, if I may.
Yes.
It, it has dawned on me that the two Janazas this morning. Imam, uh, Hameen Rasool in Chicago and Imam Abdul, Abdul Kareem, Abdul Rahman, Rahim Kareem in New York. I know Masjid Adam has the, had, they, they were both at seven thirty. Think that I was looking at Imam Hameen Rasool's, uh, obituary last evening and as it was, it's recorded in, uh, with the funeral, with the services that's online. And Imam Abdul Rahim Kareem, I believe his, I think someone submitted his through a text to us, but Imam Abdul Aziz, like I say, uh, Masjid Adam, a community center for, a center, Community Life Center for Human Excellence there in Bronx, New York. Imam Abdul Aziz here with American Muslim 360 and, uh, is officiating. Service there. So many, I'm sure, I mean, I believe wholeheartedly, I, I see, I think Muhammad, if he, Muhammad, Assalamualaikum, if you're able to speak, uh, were you able attend or did they video? I knew Imam was going to be online, the services, Janazal Services. Maybe he's not able to speak with us right this moment, but okay, that's what I wanted to mention. So Alhamdulillah to the families. May Allah's one of the dollars bless them with, as we know, it, it takes a little time.
Yes, may Allah bless them and have mercy upon them. And, uh, you know, this is one of the struggles in life that, uh, we go through, we all go through. The grief of losing a loved one or, um, someone close to us, that process, uh, we're always unprepared for it, um, when it happens. And, uh, it is something that again, we have to manage. Just as the, uh, Imam was saying in his presentation, how we manage our lives with Quran. And we have to many times go back and consult our holy Korans and consult the life of Prophet Muhammad. Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. How he managed, how he managed the trials of life and the struggles of life. And, um, given us this model, we have this model. Our Prophet Muhammad, may the peace and blessings of Allah be upon him, is what we're saying when we say Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. May the peace and blessings of Allah be upon him. His life is more documented than any other prophet, um, that we know of. And we call these documented, um, events of the Prophet's life, the Hadith. Um, the life example of our Prophet Muhammad, may the peace and blessings of Allah be upon him, that shows us how to do just that, to manage our lives with the Holy Quran. So we can challenge, um, different misnomers that may arise with the modeling of our Prophet. And Prophet Muhammad reminded us that he's just a human being. Okay? So lets us know that the human being had, can, can rise and elevate the life through scripture. Okay? And that's why this modeling is so very, very important. And many aspects of the life have been modeled by Prophet Muhammad. So the grief that we all experience, um, through the loss of life, loss of loved ones, uh, and modeling that and, uh, consulting our Lord, our holy Korans. And the example of Prophet Muhammad will help us manage this aspect of life in a very positive and successful way. You know, so that we are not distraught and overcome by the grieving process. You know, I, um, had a family member who, um, actually my step grandmother. When my grandfather passed away, she cried and grieved for years, I mean, years. Not months, but years on the loss of, um, my grandfather on his transition, on his death. Our perspective is different in Islam because we know that, uh, they have transitioned. Okay? And that the life energy, the spirit, the unseen part of a person still exists. They're not in the body. They have transitioned. And we all have a finality, a day of judgment where we will get our results of this life. This life is but a test for us. And we graduate from this life and we transition. So when we consult our scripture and we consult the example of our Prophet Muhammad, we learn the essence of life and the cycles of life. We learn what Allah intends for us. And this helps us manage many things that we will face in our environments and in our life. So again, we pray for the families. So that they are not of those who become distraught and overcome with grief. It's going to be a grieving process for sure, but we are not overcome by it. So, so may Allah, uh, enlighten us all and have mercy upon them. And many times we feel when a person passes away that this huge void is there from them departing. But Allah can fill all voids. All voids can be filled with Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And, um, life continues and connections continue through this life. And we continue, we continue to develop and we continue to work. Okay, so managing the life with the Holy Quran was the topic that Imam Rashad Mujahid presented. And I'm going to look for, that was part two. I'm going to look for part one. And he said he was gonna continue it again. So there might be a part three. I'm gonna look for all those. And I pray that I can find those online as well and listen to them. Um, because I really enjoyed his presentation. So I know Imam Michael has, uh, a very big event today. They have their, um, annual, um, fundraiser for Sister Claire Muhammad School there in Indianapolis, Indiana. And I might have missed it. For him saying that he would, if he said he was not going to be, uh, present today because of that. But, um, yeah. I just heard from him that, um, he sends his apologies, but he is super busy. They're preparing for their thirty-third consecutive Parents Appreciation Banquet today. They're in Indianapolis, Indiana, and they're super busy, um, preparing for that. So we wish them much success, um, for this thirty-third, uh, consecutive Parents Appreciation banquet that they're having there in Indianapolis, Indiana today. So I, uh, didn't get that memo. You know, but he did alert me just now. Okay? So we're going to take a break, uh, right now and we'll be, uh, right back with you. Okay? So as we take a break, please stay tuned. We're gonna take an intermission. And we'll be right back with you following this pause. Alhamdulillah.
Assalamualaikum, Imam.
Okay, well, we are going to, this is gonna be a rebroadcast of last week. Make it. So, uh, we're going to play that for, for you now as we get started, uh, with the program. So it's also a refresher.
I'll bring your last name first. I was trying to stop. And to all the believers. Is it all ready? Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Again, um, the honor to be here. Always a pleasure to be with the believers. Yeah. So we go ahead and get started, if you may. I don't think there's any other announcements before.
No, sir. Go right ahead.
Okay, and we have stopped at the end of, uh, I had a mark on my page. I see when, in the end of page ninety-four, oh, ninety-four, we stopped last week. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Did we complete page ninety-four? Did we stop?
No, sir. I believe with the last section you read was Satan fears God. Iblees was a gen, not an angel. Angels are created to worship Allah, subhanahu wa ta'ala.
Yes, sir, and we stopped at the end of the second paragraph.
Yes, sir.
The last sentence says, "I invited the brother to do this," okay? Right, so now we know where we stopped, we pick up at page 94. Let me say this first, alaikum, this is like, and page 94, it's called Table Talk. Prophet. Yes, sir.
Assalamu alaikum, brother, ma'am. I don't know whether you remember or not, but I think that, listen, when you were saying it was any announcement, it was something that, that you were going to say at the end of the last production before you began the reading in that regard. So I, you know, I just, just reminding you if it's a reminder there or not, you know.
Well, you could help me out, I'm trying to be you said that I was going to.
Wow, you know, at the, at the very, very, very end there, there was, I wouldn't say controversy, but I was thinking, there was some disagreement in regards to, one of the things that you was reading in regards to Imam Muhammad, an angel, looking at angel, the commentary that Imam was making, there was when it was disagreeing with that in terms of literally in that regard. And you were given the explanation from the Tafsir of Imam Muhammad, that when it was mentioned in the Quran, the angels were questioning and that these were not, these were not real angels. You actually was going, the definition of what an angel is as compared to the gen nature being different in that regard. And Iblees was a gen, he wasn't an angel, but he had the ability to perform, perform as an angel, but his nature was gen. So that's where the difference was and, and of course, we had a caller that differ with that. And, you know, you and I had the conversation afterwards that that perhaps would be a good idea, maybe to start out with just giving the Tafsir Imam Muhammad on angel, how angel different, differentiates from being gen.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thanks for the reminder. Well, let's do, we're gonna do that, let's go back to page 89.
89 or 90, oh, okay, yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, and you just to
Clarification.
Clarification, thank you.
Yes.
On page 89, you got subtitles, Iblees, the gen was not a true angel. The second one says, "Angels do not reason or question." And the third entry, a subtitle says, "Gen only performed as an angel." And what Imam Muhammad was saying here, the story of all the trouble that we are addressing started with someone who was the leader over the angels in heaven. He was not a true angel. He was a gen. But he was performing in the role of an angel. But how is it possible that a gen can be the leader for angels? As long as he has no wrong in him, he is superior to the angels. If he can't perform on the plane of the angels and he is a gen, he is superior to them. Because he can perform in their role as angels. But he has a role that they cannot perform. They cannot question, question things. They can only respond to what God wants without reasoning or questioning things. But the gen is like the human being, he is rational. He can question things and he is also capable of performing as an angel. He has the advantage over the angel who can only perform as angel, but cannot question things. The superiority is very clear when God says, quote, "I am going to create a mortal human being." Meaning that he will be like the gen and that he will have the ability to examine and question things and come up with his own independent decision. But he will have human nature, not gen nature. Then the next one, page 90, now subtitle, Iblees, an angel by circumstances. Human nature means he will be, yeah, yes. Human nature means he will be a sensitive creature and sympathetic. The human being is going to be a different creature from the angel and that he can question and reason and he wants to grow in understanding, wants to grow and knowledge. And he is going to be different from the gen in that he will be sensitive and sympathetic. He will have compassion on the little guy and sympathy on the suffering. He will be different from both of them, that is, the angel and the gen. This was announced by God to the gen, Iblees, who was performing as an angel. He was an angel, whether you can Bible or not. I do not have enough time to deal with all these little things, small things. At that time, Iblees was performing in the role of an angel and he was an angel. However, he wasn't an angel by creation. He was an angel by circumstances. Circumstances had put him with the angels. So he was performing as an angel. But when the test came to see if he was really truly an angel, he couldn't pass it because he was a gen. He could think and reason. He could think and reason it. So when his thinking came into the picture, he says, he said, "No, I am not going to accept this, I am better than this preacher. I am the leader way up here above all of them down there. You're going to choose something that doesn't have any wisdom, that doesn't have my wisdom and with my knowledge, my skills and my ability, I have been faithful to you, God, up here with the angels. I have even kept them for you." He is arrogant, a good kind of man. So the last part I read, then we have discussion. It says, "Not a true angel. But God said, "When I have breathed into him of my own spirit or inspired him of my own self, then you accept him, you submit to him." So it made Iblees arrogant and defiant. In Arabic, it is, which means he defied the order and he became proud and arrogant. He saw himself too big to submit to what he was asked to do. God said, "Get you down from here, all of you." So the angels, the gen and the man were cast down. The Arabic word, kubat, means together, like an organized group. In an organized form, they were cast down altogether. God put the, God put the rebellious gen in the life of all human beings. Because the only ones who were up there was the father. He had not been born.
We had.
You know, I'm starting to think, we had not been born or come into existence yet. All of us came from that one, be cast down, along with the gen and the angels too, that rebel. If any rebel, referring to the angels, if any rebel, they were cast down. No, I'm sorry, it's in, yeah, look, yes, yeah, the gen and the angels, if, if any rebel, they were cast down. We know the story very well. We know the angels accepted, but they were very hesitant and questioning it too. But they finally accepted God's will. This is very important here. Every angel that questioned God's will and said, "What? Would you create something that is going to make trouble in the earth and cause trouble?" Everyone
And cause bloodshed.
And cause bloodshed. Everyone that responded like that was not a true angel. So that's more than just Iblees. There were others pretending or in the character or circumstances of an angel, but not angels. It's just, so Imam saying that any of them that questioned the creation of Adam, they were not a true angel. So that's really speaks very clear, and I'm trying to rehash the issue from last week, but for clarity, I think so what we're doing now, for clarity. Imam Muhammad was quite emphatic and came with various points to support. What he was saying was that Iblees was not an angel. And he said very plainly, "Angels do not question things." And all the ones that did question were not really angels. They were in the role of an angel. They were by circumstances in that environment, so they performed as an angel. But if they asked questions, they asked their question, they were not truly angels, they were gen. That's my thinking on, anybody have any thoughts on this reading so far?
Yes, sir. No, go ahead, Martha.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak to it in this, in this way, only because of my exposing to myself, my my, my way of thinking that was encouraged or influenced by what I was shared, I was taught as a child. And, and evolving to, with that thinking, but not realizing that that thinking was still with me. And I'm speaking of seeing angels in a form that, of a physical form. And I didn't see angels as that which submits to the will of Almighty God in the form of, of energy, in the form of electricity, in the form of, of the atoms and the electrons. And I didn't see angels in that way. So I now know that those forms, as I think of it, do not have the ability to question what, what role, what task or whatever they're aligned to do by Almighty God's will. But as Iblees, but as you were reading, I heard say wisdom and the skill, other skills and that Allah, subhanahu wa ta'ala, Allah created the form that is totally submissive and it needs not question. Then there's that form that has submissiveness and it has the additional characteristics, which takes it to a higher form in the sense of its uses abilities. And I'm seeing that as the gen. It is an intelligent, but it also is connected with desires. And, and, and it can fulfill its desires. But being in the submissive role or form, it has the attachment identification when necessary. It can submit. So for my, my thinking, I said to myself, I said, "Oh, Allah, then that is how, you know, for myself, that's how I'm to approach it." I mean, it's easier for me rather than coming with my thinking and then applying my thinking to what Malak means. So now when I see Malak or anything close to that, when I see that in the outer being, I mean, it takes us to, and be engaged in both process. The, the, the understanding of the use of what we quote unquote say angel and then understanding the word Malak as it is, as Muhammad, that meme. You can have lake, a lake, a lake by itself, but when that meme is there, it is a form of unis in the information way, way. And Imam has referred to it as forces in creation. And not, and it's not the thing that I had been influenced by of thinking. So I put my thinking upon what I read and from the interpreter, interpreter's presentation in the Quran. So I'll stop right there.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I love how you, the Ma and the Me and the Mu, the prefix. Yeah, that, that, yeah, that's important for us, this is not for this discussion, but since you mentioned it, I thought I would say this now. That's just so important how that prefix can really shape a word and how we ought to see it within Arabic. For example, we got Salam, which means peace, but you put Mu in front of it and you got the person to peace. Another one is Sajud or Sajadah, which you put the Ma in the front, it becomes a place for, for making Sajadah, which we say, Mas, Sajadah or Mas Jid. So you, you, you thank you for mentioning that.
And even Muhammad, as we think, alhamdulillah.
Yeah, alhamdulillah, or you got the name Hameed, right? But you put the Mu in front of it, Mu Hameed, you got, Mu is saying the person. Most times you say Mu, like you got Jajad, Mujad, the person that, that revives. Yeah, so, alhamdulillah. Brother Imam Karim, you had a comment?
Yes, you know, the controversy came over the reading of the Quran. And what we have to understand that there are two forms of guidance contained in scripture. It is the guidance that is explicit and it is the guidance that is inferred, inferred, which requires a level of thinking. It put our thinking processes. Now knowing the, the definition of angel and what has been expressed here that they disagree, that lets us know by inference that these are not truly angels a hundred percent. It is inferred, so we have to use our thinking ability. For the
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, go ahead, my brother.
No, this is, go ahead, finish, finish.
So, you know, like we see the Hoopie Bird. Now, we know birds don't talk. But, but, but that is an inferred, an inferred subject matter that requires our thinking and our thought and putting rational application to the idea of a bird. to the idea of a bird talking. Everything is in the, the, the content of the human being.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So that is, that, that is an, an example of inferred. Uh, they're explicit, which is there's no ambiguity. And then there are guidance that is inferred. So I think that has caused this concern. Thank you.
No, thank you. And, and that's important for us to keep in mind is what is inferred, which requires us to have a second reading or a third reading. Because, uh, the bird didn't talk human language, but everything in creation talks. They just has to speak hu- human language. And we look at our father, uh, well, I, I refer to all my great African Americans for, in, 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 in our American history, it's father and mother. So our, our father, George Washington Corver, he talked to plants every day. He said, if you listen to him, if you listen to him, that, that's the key, if you listen to him, he said they'll talk back to you. So, uh, but that requires, you know, having the, uh, the mind being fluid enough. You know, to appreciate those things. Yes, sir, brother Mark.
Yes, sir. Alhamdulillah. And thank you so much. I want to thank you, um, Imam Mekel, thank you for going back over that because I, I thought and felt like it would be good for those who listening, who listening at time last week and be listening in the future. Um, to get a clear understanding, uh, from our teacher, Imam Waisadi Muhammad. And, um, Kareem is right on spot. Um, so, uh, that Surah Ali Imran. And that's the third Surah. And it is Ayat seven, where Allah gives the composition of the Quran. And so clearly this is mutu shabiha. Um, that which is allegorical, but it still is revealing. It's revealing something, uh, to us, uh, in regards to angel, gen. And how, uh, these, um, these, uh, different creations, uh, how they are. And the capacity for the gen to be able to perform, uh, as an angel. But clearly gen nature is different from angel nature. And angel, angel can, angel doesn't have the ability to perform as a gen, but the gen can perform as an angel. And also, we look at the human being, uh, in that regard, that can perform, uh, as an angel. But yet have human nature. And so this is very, very important that we start with the basic and fundamentals. And actually Allah says that. And I got Surah Ali Imran, and that the explicit that which is clear is the basic and fundamental of the Quran. It is the foundation. And some even said, mother, you know, there, um, very important. And if we don't accept what our teacher is giving us in teaching us the Quran. We can be totally off course and think we right because we're reading it literally. And, and so all the verses, just as Kareem said, you can't take them as just literally. Because then you're gonna be off course. You looking at it as, as angels. And, and thinking Allah gave them special permission to, to question him. Allah doesn't need, uh, to have a, a question, a answer session with any of his creation. Uh, you know, his will is in, always in command. And the angels are executors of Allah's will. They never question. They just execute God's will. I'll stop there, but thank you so much because what you read is clarity. Uh, you know, and the distinction between angel, gen. I believe being a gen, you'll find that in Surah eighteen fifty. The Quran always is the foundation for anything that we may not have a understanding, but we have to practice. To use it, and if we use the met, we use the methodology that Imam Muhammad has given us. And with Allah's help, Allah will bless us with a better understanding. Thank you. Assalamualaikum.
Waalaikumussalam. Now, uh, now, on page ninety, at the very, the first paragraph. Uh, it says, this superiority is very clear when God says, quote, I'm going to create immortal human being, equal. Meaning that he will, he will be like the gen. And that he will have the ability to examine and question things and come up with his own independent decision. But he will have human nature, which the email explains human nature, it said. The difference between the human and the gen, that the human will be sensitive creature, be a sensitive creature. It's pathetic. But do have the right to come up with his own independent decision. Allah, he respects that. But as you were saying, brother Mark, it don't mean that our independent decision is gonna be correct.
That's right.
Because we are a, a growing, a, uh, e- evolving creature. And, and we learn by making mistakes, you know, or we get some of today and get the rest of it maybe tomorrow or next year. But there's a process, we do have independent decision. Now, the challenge, and this ties in with last week's, uh, conversation, and need to have this discussion going forward. Yes, we want to respect each, every person who comes on, to have a, a brain, to have a mind. Uh, it says right here, Allah gave us the ability to examine and question things and come up with his own independent decision. So we want to respect that. Also, we have to have, what in my opinion, we have to be a higher respect. Is that, uh, if we are students of the Imam, that means we're not the teachers of the Imam. And since we're not the teachers of the Imam, if the Imam says something, I know, I did it for many, many years. Imam, Imam said a lot of things and I did not understand. I, I, I thank Allah for giving me the nature never to reject it. Never ever to reject it. I said, I don't know what you're talking about. I did, I did not, I mean. Y'all remember the long first sentence? No, the fourth sentence, fourth sentence?
Yes, sir.
There was no way, no way we got that.
That's right. Man, was deep.
And all that for, for five, six hours. I'm like, ooh. But I never, I don't think none of us did. We, we never said. We, we never, and that was the problem for me was last week. When a person says, they push back. I said, well, I want to ask them, but why are you even here in this group? And, cause the man told us in his, she said, he said, you're not my teacher. He says, can you teach me, you know, you're in the wrong place. And he said, and he told us, how many times he told us, he said, you're not my student. Leave.
That's the best information. That's the best information he gives on what like.
He said it just, just that plainly. And he stopped there. He told us, he said, if you know somebody who's here, whether you're not my student, let me know. So now in that spirit, I'm bringing back to this Saturday morning session. We're not gonna put anybody out per se. But if someone comes and has a, anybody, male or female. They come in, they have a issue on a regular basis with. And we read it from the book. Have we just done plainly, Imam said this, here it is, page so and so, Craig, so and so. And they continuously be one that rebels, actually use that word, strong word. They, they go, or they cut the grain all the time, saying, well, why are you here? We here as students. We're not here as leaders of the man, we're here as, as students of the man. So anybody have, have any thoughts on that? How should we, I'm asking, question, how should we deal with that going forward?
I think you, you said, you answered it, uh, just what Imam Muhammad said to his, to his students. And if you were a student, you shouldn't be there. And I think the same thing should be applicable. Uh, you know, to you be your way, to, uh, to us be our way. And if in fact, if you're not a student, but you want to contend that you're a student, but you're contending with what the teacher says. This may not be the platform for you. Then you, you shouldn't, you shouldn't, uh, just tune in. And, and, and then just continue to contend with what the teacher is saying. If you're a student, a, a, and I agree with you, the early days, when those long sessions at the Imam on the fourth Sunday day. None of us walked away. None walked away with a understanding. But as you said, we didn't push back on that. We didn't push back on that. Imam Muhammad even said that when he first started reading the Quran. He said, I didn't understand everything. He said, but I didn't push back on anything. So that becomes a position or the disposition, I should say, that, um, that you should take in, in regards to this platform. We don't need the contention, we, we don't need the contention because there may be new Shahadas. There may be people that may not be Muslims that may be listening. And, and then now there's confusion. That is, uh, was I believe the angel for real or this or that? No, we want the clarity there. And we should just invite them, say, well, maybe this is not the platform for you, you know.
Yes, sir. Brother, uh, uh, this mail.
Yes, salam aleikum.
Uh, thank you, my sir.
I, I, I think that is the problem when you, when you contend, contend with the amount, but then you often say you're a student, it's almost. It, it's hard to, they exist that they're a student, but they think they have the ability to contend with what he says. And I, I tell them that without the Imam, you, you wouldn't even have the framework.
That's right.
Yeah, so what makes you think? You know, you could, you can disagree with something without being on that, on the, on, having that same. Oh, I don't even understand, just having the same knowledge base. I, I can, I can understand if you had the same knowledge base, maybe come from a different understanding, but he, the Imam's the one that gave you your knowledge base. So, uh, 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 it, it is hard to contend with, but I'll stop there.
It's paradoxical.
You know, that is that rebel. You know, for real, I mean, how, why would call someone your teacher? And you don't submit to what they're teaching. You rebel, you know? Now, we will be confronted with people that have a different opinion. Imam Muhammad said, every human being has been gifted with a rye, rye. And he said, rye means an opinion. And if there is no conclusion to that, we say like the Allah say, li- li- like the scholars say. Allah who Allah, Allah is the best known, and we move on, and we move on.
Yes, sir. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we, uh, you know, ha- have this conversation, because as we just said, it may come up again. In, in one form or another. And if another person given their honest opinion, I think we should respect that. But, but they crossed that line, they crossed that line, we gotta be on it. All, and, and we, if we see it as a group, then we should, as it was last week, I said, brother, I said, you're the only ones saying it. And then there's, and maybe I pushed it too far, because I, I said, brother, I said, I, I said, I don't think you hear yourself. And, and I will say it again, but saying it out loud, a person will go deep down, he's on defense. But I mean, on defense, you know, he gonna come out swinging, maybe with his eyes shut, you know, so. And that's, and maybe I shouldn't have done that part, but, so I just want to get some clarity.
Waalaikum. I had a, had another Imam from our community. It was another group and it was like mixed, um, some were students of the Imam and some were new, kind of new, newer. They just came to learn. And, and he was emphasizing that Allah can teach us all individually. And he was emphasizing it in a way that he would teach us things beyond what the Imam gave us. And at one point, another Imam had to check him like, I understand what you're saying technically is true, but don't put that out here. That you're able to go beyond what the Imam is teaching, not in this situation. And they kind of had a back and forth. And I, I don't know if it was some type of philosophical disagreement or what, but I agree with the Imam that kind of put him in check, like, don't, don't put that out there like that, because, you know, we're students of the Imam.
Right.
And, and he made the comment, I'm a doctor this, and, and he said, that doesn't matter. You know, you're still the student.
Yes, sir.
So, and I'll stop there.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, Alhamdulillah. Okay. All right. I'm glad we had this conversation. It was well worth every minute of it. Okay, let's go with our reading, I said page ninety, I had ninety-four, right?
Yes, but page ninety-four.
Yes, fine. I seen that table, table talk.
Yes, sir.
Okay, page ninety-four. Uh, brother Mark, your hands still up or did you forget to put your hand down?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna put my hand down.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, table talk. Prophet, heaven. And again quoting Surah two, ayat thirty, where Allah says, I am making a man in the earth. And this time it says, they have man, but in Arabic it says, Khalifa time, Phil, I see Khalifa time. But man, Khalifa said the same thing. Uh, the next subtitle says, Jesus is the second Adam. Then it's the last, uh, says, Adam is on the first level of heaven. Jesus on the second level of heaven. Imam Muhammad says, another thing that is important to know about Jesus Christ as Savior is that he is the second Adam. This is the Bible. No, no, that, that is the Bible. Okay, that's the Bible. In Al Islam, he is put on the second level. Adam is on the first level and he, referring to Christ Jesus, is on the second level in the ascent of the spirit or the soul. We're gonna put a mark on that, the ascent of the spirit or the soul. Imam says, Adam is not on earth in that ascent. He is in heaven. All of them are in heaven. You can be on earth where Adam was formed and be buried in the earth and not ascend, even up to Adam. Allah begins the creation of man in the heavens. He says to the angels, quote, I am about to create a mortal man and give him charge in the earth. Page ninety-five, again, uh, a reference to Surah two, ayat thirty. I am making a Khalifa in the earth. Imam says, when God said to the angels, quote, I am, I am about to put a responsible leader in the earth, a Khalifa, a human mortal. The angels were disturbed and they said, quote, this will cause bloodshed, end quote. And God said, wait until I have inspired him with my own spirit. Importing my own spirit to him, then you, you submit. Accept him and make obedience to him, sashtah. End quote. These are, are angels. These are angels is addressed, th- these are angels God is addressing. So what is God saying with that statement? God is saying, quote, I accept that human beings are going to make trouble on earth. And humans do make trouble on the earth. They are not perfect beings like angels to be trusted, to keep the peace and be safe. You cannot trust all human beings with that. But some of these humans are going to qualify for my own spirit. I will inspire them with my own spirit from my own self. I will inspire them with my own spirit from my own self. Any comments on that? I I like uh Imam was showing us that the that this ascension, we know it's the prophet, but he's our model. Yes, sir.
Yes, the praise to Allah, the Imam is sharing something very key here.
Yes, sir.
Uh I heard our teachers say, Imam Wa Fatihi Muhammad, that when we prostrate, we are prostrated to Adam. We are submitted to the original nature. We we said, well, let let me make Sashda to Allah. Allah needs nothing from us.
Right.
We benefit, we benefit from Salaah and Sashda. So Imam Muhammad said, yes, we turn toward the Kibla. So we prostrate, he said, really, you are prostrating to the original nature. Yes, sir, thank you, my brother.
You know, though, I got two three songs I want making, yes. Fast as I can without going too fast. It seems that wrong what you're saying, brother, uh Kareem was said, Imam Kareem. The same thing that it believes in the angels were told to bow to, which is really human excellence. We too got to bow to even excellence.
Yes, sir.
And I heard the Imam say one time that the Kaaba itself, the black cube in Mecca represents human excellence and the black stone stands for the human heart. And it's excellence, in its original nature, that was black, black meaning original nature. Our bowing is is uh, not as you said, not to Allah, but it's to his works and his highest works, if you could say, is to actually a human being. We have to submit to that, even in our lives. A lot of people have to go to prison before they they get them to submit to their better selves. You know, something you need more spanking than other child before they begin to submit to them better selves. But we all willingly or unwillingly have to bow, make prostration to that model of human excellence. This is what I'm I'm getting from 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 this, reading and from what you just said, uh brother Imam Kareem. Yeah, that's one thought that I can make to him, brother Mark's hand up, brother Ishmael hands.
Yeah, yeah, Alhamdulillah, no, um uh both of you are hitting the nail right on the head there. And and I I just wanted to just add that it it he didn't order that uh surrendering or bowing or acknowledgement until he said, after I breathe into this creation by spirit. I I think that's very key in terms of Allah, he has for all of his creations, as a matter of fact, he has in, he has influence all of his creations. And and particularly um his human creation. And so, uh you know, this excellence in human nature is seen after, after Allah breathes into his, some of his rule in that. How are you gonna improve upon what the Creator has created? He knows it, but you know not, you know, so he knows, that's what he's also saying. Uh he knows, but you know not, you only know in terms of what it is that you see. And so even going a little bit deeper there, uh what um the eventually Shaitan saw was not the completed, was not the man in completion, this is very important. Not completed, I'll stop there, but.
Now, I mean, but with that, we get ready, but uh really again, because it's the first what you just said. It says, God says, wait until I have inspired. Remember my own spirit, imported my own spirit to him, then you submit, said then. And make obedience to him. Then also, we have also that when Allah challenged the angels, he said, name these things. And they said, we have no knowledge, except what you gave us. Then he turned to Adam and said, name these things, and Adam, he knew. And 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 Adam has been naming them ever since, and e- even to this day. Because that's the quality, then once it was done, then the angels, they submitted, they bowed, not their beliefs. Brother Ishmael.
Yes, sir, thank you. I I have a question about the the topic, the second one, the topic before this of Jesus, the second Adam. And the Imam, he he emphasized Jesus being the second, I was, Adam was from the Bible. He said, Jesus is the second level. So my question is, following that logic, should we look at useful, it's the third Adam? Uh he dreams of the fourth Adam, that's my question.
Yeah, well, yeah, we we go to the words of our prophet, he said, every child is born on the pattern of Adam, yes, so we we all. And also, not only that, he said, we all are Bela.
Yes.
So, yes, to answer your question, yes, uh because the brothers are, the prophets are all brothers. And and one who does not negate the one that came before him, he just extends or expands from that Adam base, we all have to have Adam members. Yes, sir.
But Imam Sahir, um 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 a master key that Imam Muhammad gave to us is this. He said that Muhammad is Adam in his most highest developed mature form.
That's right.
It is Adam in his highest developed, most mature form. And so I think that that really answers the question. Because uh you know, you start with Adam, Adam is the beginning, you you know, and even if you look at uh many of the things that Imam Muhammad has said in regards to Adam. He, when it comes to the intellect, he said, Adam represents the dawning of the intellect. But Ibrahim ala Salam, he represents the universal intellect. Um and uh also that he uh comes through those stages. But the prophet came through all of those stages of ascension, the ascension for the soul and the ascension for the intellect, but it starts with Adam. Uh uh so this is the travel, so you're absolutely right, uh that Muhammad is Adam in his highest, most developed form in maturity.
Yes, uh they answered the question for our brother Ishmael. Uh because I think he was following a logic with uh it dreams be the third. No, and not, and then uh, not you said, and then when it 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 dreams be the fourth and fifth and so on. And 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 I I can see that logic and I can appreciate it. Uh but I think we should see Adam in in all of us, and as brother Mark just said, the ultimate Adam, or Adam in his completion. Is he Muhammad, is he Muhammad, from the picture upon him, yes.
And Alhamdulillah, you know, uh and we hear Allah says, he is making. The process is not complete yet. And Prophet Muhammad, we pray the prayers and the peace upon him. He is the, he is the completion project. Is the Khalifa, thank you, my brother.
And they go back when the Quran says on this day, if I perfected and completed my favors upon you. Then that's the end of, that's not the end, but that's the completion of Muhammad. The Quran is Muhammad, Muhammad is the Quran, okay, yes.
That's a good way to put it, brother Imam.
Yes, yes, I mean, now, Aisha said it first.
Yeah, yeah.
She said, you know, guys, she said, describe to us about Muhammad, she said, he's the Quran walking.
Proceeded with a question that she had for the whoever this man was that was questioning her. And uh I I thought, you know, that's very insightful, that it it was reported that she asked him a question. Do you not read the Quran? Do you not read the Quran? And then she turned around and said, well, that's who he is. You you know, it it says it walking by action, but uh actually living the Quran. We are following Muhammad the Prophet, and we truly follow him, we have to live the Quran.
We hear people say, all I need is the Quran, that's all I need. No, you need the Quran and the example of Prophet Muhammad. True expression of the Quran, you must bring Muhammad with you, and when I say, I mean, his character. His Uswah, his character is honest, his human uh innocence, bring.
Sorry, I'm speaking and I'm on mute. Thank you, thank you. Salam aleikum, this has been a rebroadcast of uh last Saturday's presentation. Uh Saturday morning, Taliyah by Imam Mikel Sahir. And we were reading from the book, the commentary on selected verses from the Holy Quran uh from the discussions of Imam Mufti Muhammad. So we invite you to join us again next Saturday, Imam Mikel. They have a very important event today in Indianapolis, their thirty-third consecutive Parents Appreciation Banquet for the Sister Clara Muhammad, uh we can school there in Indianapolis. So we wish them much success on their event, we pray Allah reward them, and uh they have a wonderful event. So our next program is Preparing to Make It in the Land of Plenty. Um Imam Delacey, uh Umar is the host, and uh Michael Hameen is engineering. And also uh giving commentary along with Professor Rabani Muhammad. So welcome to Preparing to Make It in the Land of Plenty.
With God's name, the merciful benefactor, merciful redeemer. We witness openly that has no deity, word they worship, one alone who has created everything. Allah, and we witness that Prophet Muhammad, peace and blessings be upon him, is his last prophet to humanity. And messenger, Allah's messenger to us and all the world. He's also considered to be a mercy to all the worlds. Rakmatul Ailamin, all the systems of knowledge has has been described this Ailamin. Play on Ilum, Ilum knowledge. Yes, and uh we uh we covered some very interesting territory last week. And we wanted to just reengage our audience with that uh. We were talking about neighborly needs. And you know, we, as you look at, a- as you, as you look at this concept, El Maun is given in the Arabic, neighborly needs. And uh it's, it covers community development. It's a, it's a essential, it's an essential part for developing community life. That you be concerned about your neighbors, be concerned about the needs and your your close associates, your family, your close neighbors, your distant neighbors. Very essential, and uh we we are always on the path of building and developing community life. And we are struggling, we are struggling with that, I, in my opinion, to uh find the right ingredients, if I could use that type of concept. How do we get to that? And and we are talking about strategically, looking at what needs to be active in developing community life. And uh this concept of neighborly needs is so important when we look at it in that regard, that light, uh apply that to it. So uh peace and blessings to everyone, Michael, you there, and Professor Rabai, did you get the chance to join us?
Uh the professor hasn't joined us yet.
You say he's not there, Michael?
Not yet, no, sir.
Okay, good, uh let me get my speaker up a little bit, am I being here?
Seen, I can see the pores on your face.
I guess I'm right up in the camera.
A little bit close.
Yeah, I was leaning over to get to the speaker, but like if I'm being heard, I don't have to adjust, but you were a little low. Now you are very loud, you were a little low, so I was gonna raise my volume a little bit.
Okay, you're loud and clear on my end.
Yeah, well, you were a little low, now you're loud and clear. So uh go ahead and uh go ahead and uh share some thoughts with us on this particular topic, community development. And with respect to neighborly needs.
Bismillah, rahmanirahim, with God's name, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer. Uh assalamualaikum to you and to the Zoom as well as the YouTube audience, God's peace be upon.
Michael, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes, sir.
Uh I wanted, this is a question to Manero, actually, I'm wondering if we, can we tag this presentation? The importance of neighborly needs in community development. The importance of neighborly needs in community development or to community development. I wanna know, can we tag our presentations, because we have a lot of presentations, I don't think we have them properly tagged to be identified. That's so that's a question.
Okay. This is the Manera. Did you wanna respond now? Okay, well, she may have stepped away.
Go ahead, Michael.
The idea of community development is not one that is new. And uh over the years, and I I should say, over hundreds and hundreds of years, uh this, this idea of community has developed. Umar, one defining uh meaning is the group. Group and human beings have been given the nature to group together. And uh and Allah describes these groupings, tribes, the nations. Uh in our human development, you know, starting with the family, of course. You know, men and women coming together. And the idea of marriage with men and women is one that is historically sound. Uh male, female. Relationships coming together as, as a, as a couple. The Zalwuj Allah describes that, that coming together, that union. Zalwuj as honorable pairs, honorable, and I believe productive pairs. So, uh, community is established in the long line of, of human, human development and progress. And neighbors, we've seen in the development of America. Neighbors would come and assist one another in terms of building barns and other activities. We also see neighborly needs when a natural disaster takes place.
Yes.
It's natural for the human beings to come to the assistance of, of their fellow man. And in, in I would call a neighborly way. But it seems that after the natural disaster that removes the layers of separation and division, that men have developed among themselves. That after that natural disaster, we find, especially now, a lot of tribal, you know. You see, and I think it's, it's necessary for us to look at this. The weaponization of religion to, to cause or, or to, to apply power over others. Who I just mentioned are neighbors, you know, having, you know, having dominance over, over other groups. Is something that the human being has had a problem with. And Allah has given us the language through the Holy Bible and Jesus' prayer. The prayer of God's will being done.
Yes, yes, sir. You know, I, I would like to point out two specific things that I think was, would be important for us to look at when we are talking about model community development. You know, one was, I remember when the ma'am first introduced mosque cares, the mosque cares. He had that type of language with it, the mosque cares. And now, of course, we know it's, it's the name of his entity that he, he left here. Present is still mosque cares is, is still active. But in that first picture, I remember it well. He, he had, he had the mosque in the center and he had it in a, in a plaza setting. Where there were other entities that were designed to service the community. There was a clinic, walk-in clinic. I think there was stores, your supermarket or something like that. And various other opportunities for businesses with a, with a focus in his, I think in his presentation at that time, with a focus on service to the community. That's one concept. And, and of course, and he mentioned to us about having a multipurpose facility. If we couldn't afford just a masjid and we, we needed to be focused in our presentation. With a business that the school could be put in there. Then you had a place for the, for the, for prayer, a place for education. A place for all of the basic needs of the community, office space in there, et cetera, et cetera. For the basic needs of a community. And then there was another idea that he shared with us. And I'm paraphrasing this. He said, he said, we should be such a prayerful community that we don't have to give a kuthbar. People can look at our community and see the message of what Al Islam is, what we are, and all what we are about. And I think that's, that, that's also cause to mind and ayat in the Quran where Allah says that he has made us, made the Prophet to be a witness to us and we be a witness to the people. The Prophet a witness to us and we are witness to the people. So we, the Prophet example is a witness as how we should live and then how, how we are living should be a witness to the potential that's in the community for the people to see how their life can be as well. So these, these concepts are all very important when we want to look at community development. So Michael, share some thoughts if you would, please.
Professor's joined us now.
Yes, sir. Yeah, Professor, salam aleikum.
Wa alaikum wa salam alaikum.
Yes, we, we are having a discussion on neighborly needs and its effect on community development. How community development has to incorporate neighborly needs in the concept of it. And I was, I was sharing the ma'am's introduction to us with the mosque cares and the, and the strategic way he presented it. As well as our, our being a witness, if you caught the last part. But I'm not sure how much you caught, but inshallah, we can, I'll, I'll circle around to you, let you chime in with, with some thoughts if you would, inshallah.
Definitely. Professor, go ahead.
Well, bismillah, rahmanir rahim. With God's mercy. Thank, I thank you guys for the opportunity to speak. We, we always have to mention that Allah is one and Muhammad whom, whom he gave the revelation, last revelation of, we call the seal of revelations, the guidance for mankind, all mankind, the community. Best community. So we, we thank Allah for that. So the, the topic is to demonstrate life. When we say way of life, we're talking about, well, they, they say in this country, in many countries, religion. But we say, Al Islam is a way of life. And the way of life is always demonstrated by the actions of those people who say they're, they follow that way of life. And we say we're Muslims, followers of the Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him. And we are a community as led by our leadership and language of Imam W D Muhammad. So when we say that, we have to, we have to produce a product that reflects that way of life in that language, the new language that will help build our community, which, which is a unique community. Has been evolving, as the books say, you're the best community evolved for the good of mankind. So we show that in our everyday lives and like, like Imam said. We have to, you know, what's attractive when you, the first thing that attracts a person who is looking for a wife is the attraction of the wife in terms of the physical. That's the first thing you see. Then the way that person behaves and acts brings you more understanding of that particular person and what that person could be according to the criteria that you have. So when we as a, as a community begin to engage other communities or engage especially our community, engage our own people to do certain things that reflect culture, that reflect education. Reflect business. And we reflect the, engaging ourselves in government because most people don't understand that when you want to get something done in a multi, multi ethnic and community life, you have to engage the, the, the local government. And engage them in a way that will show your sincerity in solving a lot of problems in community life. And that, that governance will allow you to be, you know, when people are running for political positions, they always want votes. So we have, we have to show that we have something to contribute that would benefit the government. And when you do that, then when you want to build a building, when you want to build anything or get cooperation in the community, you will have connections, you have cultivated those connections. And it will be, it will be much easier or easier to continue the program that will uplift the whole community. But you have to begin with those things and show, we have business people, we have educators. We have a cultural environment that we produce almost naturally. And then we have the, the, the political people who can, who have a urge to go into that area or in that way of life. So we need facilities to show that and we need our actions to even, to even elevate and magnify those, those concerns.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for sharing that, that, that you, you definitely presented a real complete picture of some of the things we need to focus on in terms of community development. And certainly cooperating and, and these are, these, these all tie into neighborly needs. I think these are, these are, this is a concept that's pretty, pretty broad in its scope of getting along and utilizing the potential that's in your environment, your neighbors, your community, your town, a city, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you for sharing that, Professor. So Michael, share some thoughts if you will, please.
Uh, yes, the the challenge today, and it's been an ongoing challenge in the history of man to overcome the, the obstacles and barriers keeping us from being the best human beings that we can be. And the Quran has come to give guidance and to give help to those individuals that want to do what God says, says to do, to have the best life. The, the misreading of previous scripture. And I would also add the misuse of previous scripture has caused this weaponization of the spirit of, of man against man for power and material gain. Everyday folks can now see these kinds of psychological moves on the people as a group by a small group of people who have this aim of power, control, and material benefit. So, so it, it, it is, is a time of, of great unveiling of the mysteries and secrets. And it's a time of great turmoil coming upon the people. And because now we have what I call the, the cathedral of secularism. People are more concerned and move quicker in terms of what secular ideas present, are presented to them than they are going into their Bible or their Torah, Jewish scripture, or, or the Quran even. In terms of identifying the best help towards these issues that we have in front of us. Alhamdulillah.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Michael, for sharing those thoughts. Yes, so this, this concept of community development without being conscious of neighborly needs is, is very profound. And you know, I, I was thinking of the Hadith where the Prophet, he mentioned, and I'm paraphrasing this Hadith. He mentioned that he was, that he felt the angels questioned him so much about his neighborly that he thought that he was feeling that his neighbors should be as almost to inherit him, to inherit him. And you know, I was, I was looking at that in regards to our Islamic economic systems that care. And how, how Allah in that particular, in those requirements through the, through the Quran, through scripture, through scripture has designated who qualifies to get that type of, to get, to have, to share in those resources. The, the, the poor, the orphans, the poor, et cetera. And those who are, are the wayfarers, those who are stranded away from home, et cetera. Those who have, who are in shackles, prison, freed as slaves, so to speak. Those who are, and in this time, we have, we have a lot of instances of slavery, mental slavery. Of people physically in bondage to drugs and et cetera, et cetera, you know. And, and in our, in our religious concept, all of those things are neighborly needs. Those are things that we see all the time. And that's just some of the ones that I'm mentioning. Some of the ones we see all the time. So we are under obligation to see this generosity, to have the generosity in our own nature as believers in our Creator, to want to help these situations. To want to, to want to do something about the situations. And I, and I, I know, Professor, you have, you have experienced these things on a realistic basic basis. Especially when you are in the continent of Africa. You, 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 you tell us so much about what you see there. And how, and I would say in my opinion, how neglect of the poor is so devastating on the economy. Share some thoughts if you would on that.
Because there's no organized community with a, with a vision in many, in many cities and cases of the first thing is to protect your youth and your elderly. And what we see and what I, what we were talking about earlier this week, we were talking about the number of children that have gone missing in these countries as well as in the United States. And we find out in the United States, there were what, forty-two thousand?
Four hundred.
A year?
I think, yeah, I think it was like four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand, that's right.
Yeah, I think.
Four hundred thousand children going missing every year. Now, that's in this country. Can you imagine in countries that have no guardrails and no organized system to protect these children?
It might have been four hundred sixty-five, Professor. Sorry, it might have been four hundred and sixty-five yearly missing children.
Okay.
Maybe, I think that's four hundred thousand. I might be a little high. But that's a big number.
It's a big number, e- even if it's one, you know?
Yes.
So, so the, the idea is that let's connect that to community life that we, we are seeking to provide for the, for the neighbors. We have to look out for our neighbors' children as well as our own children. And this is one of the programs that I've, I've been thinking about. Is that they know that anyone who thinks that they are being trafficked or being trafficked can contact a quadrant of our community that would, that they know that would help. And we would be advertising that, you know, we have a link with the government. And we would be advertising that, you know, we have a link with the uh government, the police, the, the authorities. To come to, to help and to keep an eye out on children and the circumstances in which those. Uh neighborly children, when, when I say neighborly children, I'm talking about all the children, the neighbors. And uh, and it doesn't matter whether we live on the south side, the east side, the north or the west side. But it's still, there are certain uh indicators that we have to look out for. That will provide us with a, 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 a righteous suspicion to, to, to uh at least. If you see something, say something. But these are some, some of the things that are part, that would be part of. Our community efforts and we should be uh alert at all times. And, and uh, as we said in Boy Scout, be, 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 be alert at all times. And keep ourselves physically fit, mentally awake and morally straight. So these, these are embedded. In the uh righteous conduct of good community uh. Life and, and, and an environment that uh, the people know that. This community will not tolerate that type of behavior. And you, and they, they, they can be, they can feel safe. The children, the, 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 the. The uh juveniles and the adults, young adults can feel safe to bloom in this garden of safety.
Yes. So there's a, that's, that's something that's, you know, I, I, you, as you were talking, I remember seeing these. Signs say safe places where they actually have tried to uh address these issues. But you know, I, I was, as you were talking, I was just thinking about. That particular aspect of, of, of safety of our young women. Right now is on the forefront, it's at the forefront of the societal. I would say uh language. You know, we are, we are looking at all of the. The abused young women that Epstein and his compa- compadres. Uh partners in crime basically exploited. And how, and how they are really fighting to cover up this real. Real bad situation that we are looking at now, a, a picture of, and the possibilities. Of the damage that can be done with the neglect to be, to have safe places for our young. People coming up and trusting that they.
Could I interject something?
Yes, you may.
Uh, this is a, this is a, uh, I guess, I guess it's a generational habit. Because, look, they did the same thing to us as a whole community, as a, as a, as a whole. What we call nation, uh trafficking slaves from Africa. Uh to the uh North America and South America continents. And that pattern. Uh had to be uh, had to be adopted and, and agreed upon. By the uh nation's governments.
Yes.
This is the same pattern, but from a macro to a micro. Uh methodology. So um, the thing that. Helps solve enslavement is uh the Muslim community. And the, the, the life pattern of Muhammad the Prophet, peace be upon him, and showing and giving to the Quran. The methodology of the slave and the slaver, you see. So we have to, we have to take that. Uh, uh knowledge and develop uh models.
Yeah.
That are uh in, in this uh, uh twenty-first century uh environment.
Yeah.
And then lay hold to uh the work to get this thing done and to get this established. So that we can protect our own children and our neighbors' children. And, and show that, and show the, and, and, and show the world a model community. That is active.
Yeah.
And uh fearless about solving problems that only the uh, uh, the corrupted. Uh minds of people who are in aristocracy, in aristocracy.
Yeah.
That have had, had uh their, had no opposition because they had money.
Yeah.
And this situation now in America among people who are protecting pedophiles. And other freakish behaving people in high places. That has to be addressed and dealt with.
Yes. And this, and this is definitely a tool of the shaytan. This is definitely one of the tools of the shaytan to attack the weak. To attack the weak among us. And alhamdulillah. So Michael, we're gonna circle to you as well, get some comments on this and uh. This is a very, I think is a very powerful idea. Because we, we were looking back at, just, just a brief comment, we were looking back at the suicidal rates. And I've been here hearing a lot about that lately. And this, of course, this young lady who was one of the chief ones of abuse. Wrote a book, ac- actually has a book out about it, about her experiences. She did, she's, she committed suicide, had family, had children to leave behind. And she, she actually committed suicide. Because it just became too much for her to bear. And who knows, who knows what other circumstances are behind these things? Because if you look at it, when you're dealing with these powerful people, everybody winds up dead one way or the other. So Michael, share some thoughts if you would, please.
Uh, yes, uh, there, there are many challenges that we have as human beings. Uh, be- because of the commercial use, one of the, one of the reasons. Uh, it's not the only reason. The commercial use of sex and the, the uh. Sexualization or the uh, the uh, what's the word I'm looking for? The objectification of women as sexual, as, 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 as sexually. Sexual, sexual use in terms of selling products. She's been connected with, female has been connected with the selling of products by objectifying her, you know? And so, uh, what has happened in America, seeing this. Uh, these children, Ismail put in the chat, four hundred sixty thousand children are reported missing annually.
Wow.
Ninety percent are resolved. So is that forty-six thousand that are not resolved?
Yeah.
So what has happened in America, uh. Sign language that can be taught to our children.
Wow.
If they, if they have been captured, uh, uh. Safe places, as you mentioned, have been established for children to go to, to look for this sign that says that. This place is a safe place. Uh, in other words, to be aware that this is going on. Uh, we're gonna bring back on to not just talk. Uh, Abdul Suraj, who has a, a bit, a business, Suraj Homes. And he shared with our audience some years ago that when disasters take place. These sexual predators are there before the, before the help comes.
Wow.
Help the people because they're looking for, they're looking for males and females. That they can bring into this sex trafficking business, which is a multi, multi. Multi-million dollar business.
Yeah.
And so this mindset that wants to control the life of people. This mindset that wants to make people commodities, make them, make them uh objects. To, to sell and trade. It, it continues. You mentioned the connection, uh professor, with uh slavery. And it's exactly right. You know, uh, it's, it's a mind, it's a mind problem. And uh, for believing men and women, we know that that mind problem is the devil. Satan getting into our heads with, and with, with suggestive ideas. That go against God's will and plan. And so this is something that. Is not given in that language because the secular, secular language has taken over. So when you see certain events happening, you know, who today, how many today think that certain events? Oh, this could be the curse of God. You don't hear that kind of language. This could be the punishment of God. You don't hear that. Because the mind has been made secular, made worldly. And who's in charge of the world? The worldly appetites, the devil, and I'll stop there.
Yes. So this, this is a, this is a very important, I think what, what I would want to, us to. To reflect on how, how the structure of Inzakat. Being obligatory charity, so obliga- obligatory charity. And how that structure has encompassed the orphans, the captives. And what, this is what we are really talking about right now is that we are talking about people who have been captured. Uh stolen, basically, taken away from their safe place, their, their protective. Their protective uh families and et cetera, et cetera, taken away from that and are in captive. And being abused and used. So here we have two principles. And most of the time, it's, it's among the poor. It's among, the poor is the ones that suffer the most from these things. The miskin is called in, in the Arabic, it's that term is, is given. It's the poor. So we, we see three, three concepts where we are, where we are obligated to spend. This, this is a care, it's not a, it's not an option. We don't, it's really not an option on us. It's an obligation that God. The Creator of everything has pointed out for us to be concerned about and to, and to allocate. Resources from among our wealth. If we have a surplus of funds of, of, of money available. We have to spend on these things. We have to spend on some of the things that our Creator has ordered us to spend on. So professor, share some thoughts if you would, please.
Yeah, um, one of the emails uh from Orlando, uh brother, uh. I've forgotten the brother's name, from New York. He asked me to.
Is it Lukman?
No, no, uh, brother. Uh, can't recall his name, but he's from, he, he moved down from New York. And he used to work in, at Rikers Island. And uh, uh, so it'll come to my mind. Uh, but the point I'm trying to make is this, is that he asked me to design a facility. That would house um homeless uh families like mothers with children. Uh have a area for developing and teaching skills, a physical filled facility. Uh cafeteria and food preparation, like culinary arts and culinary development. And uh, a, a section of administration where uh education and connecting people. With uh, uh skill and job uh connections. So I did that for them. In uh about four or five years ago. Then they had, uh. So, so there's a, uh, there's always been a yearning and an idea to uh develop a physical facility. To uh house all of these activities that would build up community life in the neighborhood. So, uh, and we know that by, in our, in our efforts in the Nation of Islam. To go out into the neighborhood and to uh sell papers. Uh that were, that we had at that time, it was Muhammad's speaks. And show the people through our dress, how we uh, how we respect. Uh, uh, our women, how we develop our uh, uh relationships with the, the neighborly uh business people. And how we sell our products through our uh, our business uh ventures. Such as the bakery in Washington DC. And uh that bakery attracted Caucasians. From outside of Washington DC. In fact, that bakery was uh, was the, one, one of the impetus. From the uh, from Chicago, the Nation of Islam, under the leadership of the Al-Mualaj Muhammad, may Allah forgive him his sins and grant him paradise. And we would go out and, and once the Caucasians from Virginia and Maryland. Got a taste of the whole wheat bread.
Gingerbread.
They'd come and buy a large, large amounts of whole wheat bed, bread. And Lord have mercy when they touch that bean pie.
And, and, and the gingerbread.
And it's gingerbread, yes.
I used to. Yeah, well, that's my favorite, Michael. I, I loved, I used to love gingerbread. I can't hardly find it anymore.
No, you can't.
So we have, we have the formula. All we have to have is a cooperative energy.
Yeah.
To put those i- uh items back on the shelf, as we say.
Yes.
Uh advertise that through our, our works, you know? I mean, it could be, for instance, we uh, 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 feet, especially during this particular time where Thanksgiving is coming up. We can use those types of uh holidays to perpetuate and to advertise. Our products in uh, in, in, in local and in specialized locations. That would render uh this product, uh, and expose it to the general population. That like, like you said, you haven't tasted gingerbread, uh, uh, gingerbread, gingerbread in how many years, you see?
Oh, it's been a while.
Yeah, so it's, it's uh, and that's in every city. That's in every city. So that could be a means. To draw attention to the healthy lifestyle and the, and the friendship. The friendship of the neighbor, you see?
Yes. So there's so much, there's so much that needs to be done, that can be done. And uh, we, we have to just seize the opportunity, seize the moment. And you know, as you were, as you were speaking. We had an event here, Spirit of the Heart, and I met a young lady from, she's actually from South Africa by way of Malaysia. You know, and uh, we were talking, her husband was there, he's, he's Jamaican. And she uh, she's Muslim, by the way, a Muslim sister who, who, who were kidnapped. And brought from Malaysia and to South Africa as slaves. And you know, and, and our stories were so similar, we hit it off right away, right? And she's a, she's a baker, by the way, and she wanted to bake me something. Cause I was talking about gingerbread, she said, I can bake anything. She said, I can bake anything. So I'm gonna have her bake me some gingerbread.
Okay, okay. Now you see, look at that. You see how a lot works?
Yeah.
See how a lot works?
Yes, yes, yes.
Getting together to bake.
Children of slaves, right? Yeah, meeting, meeting in this, in an event called the Spirit of the Heart, you know, isn't that something?
You can be that.
Yeah, I'm telling you.
If you can't see that, then you, 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 your, your heart is dead, your heart is blind.
It just, we gravitated towards, her husband, he was helping me out so much, you know? With my sight impediment, every time I made a move, he was right there. And he was a fine young man. And uh, and when I was waiting outside for my ride, his wife came up to me and she started talking. She, and she was from this experience similar to ours. And she, and, but let me, but let me say this. I think I may have mentioned it last week, that she has seen so much trauma in her life. That her cortisol, that, 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 Michael, you speaks of this a lot, fight, fight or flight. that her cortisol, that, 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 uh, Michael, you speaks of this a lot, fight, fight or flight. Uh, uh, hormone. She says that now she don't produce it anymore, that she has to take supplements to, uh, replace that, 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 uh, hormone or else she goes into like, uh, very, very frenzy, she gets very shaky and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You know, so she, it's seen so much trauma that using, and she, she was just on edge all of the time in South Africa. So it seemed people burnt in tires, put in tires and burned. All of this tragedy and trauma, you know, we, we, we just don't, we can't even imagine the effects of this, these, the things that's been done to people. Now she's living, she's a living person, maybe in her forties, she not that, she not that, you know, way like we are up in the age, but that's in her forties and, and still traumatized from that experience, right? So, uh, you know, these things are real and, you know, and not to mention the people who are suicidal because of trauma, et cetera, et cetera. You know, this world has become a place almost unbearable to live for a lot of people who are, who haven't been blessed to know the benefits of, of, of the Quran and the life of the prophet example and things that we are invited to that protect our life without us even knowing we have that protection, you know? I personally, I remember the trauma of dealing with racism. But once I became a conscious of the dignity and the, the honor and the, the, I would say the, the unity of the human family, that, that trauma has, has left me in, in that sense. But I'm still looking at the effects of all of these things we are talking about now, the captives and the slaves and the, and the abusive, the abuse of pure abuse of the orphans, like that Sura said. Repelling the orphan with harshness, with harshness. Neglect, neglect for these simple things. We, we really have to pay a little more attention. And you know, and I'm always reminded of my friend, uh, Imam Qasim Akhmed, Allah forgive him, give him paradise. He reminded us of, of spend from those things that are dear to us, our treasure, our, our, our talent, our, our time and et cetera, and he added, and our touch. What is, what is, what touch, what, what unique individual touch we bring to the situation. Like this young lady, she's, she's a chef actually, and she says she loves to bake. But she's ready to spend, I just met her, she wanted to bake me something, right? And, uh, she's spending from what she has, the talent that she has and et cetera, et cetera. So I think we have to be mindful of that. Uh, Professor, share some thoughts if you would please.
I was just thinking, I said, now you have an opportunity to, uh, engage her, her and her kindness to branch out into a si- si- situation where maybe she can, she can train a couple of the uh, believers, young, young children, uh, to bake and to, uh, bake a product where they can, uh, develop, uh, um, a bakery store for their products. And those, those products can be used to help support the, uh, missing children and the abused children. So there's a lot of connections that, you know, that just from that, from that, uh, engagement that you had could, uh, bloom, that seed could bloom into a mighty plant and mighty tree.
Yeah.
That would help shade and save the, help, uh, some to, uh, uh, to benefit the community life, you know?
And you know, her husband, he's a certified, uh, community activist. He's, uh, and his focus is on young people, right?
There you go.
A husband, that's his focus, you know? So I, I've met some really, I would, I would say productive people in the last three to four months and by working with them, you know, it's, you get to know people when you work with them.
Exactly.
And we have, we have two guests that wanna engage.
Yes, and, uh, so I, I appreciate that Professor, I, I'm, I'm gonna keep that in mind as I engage him and her. I'll, I'll certainly think about that particular that you mentioned. I'm definitely gonna get her some gingerbread. So Michael, let's go to our, uh, our participants, please.
Muhammad Sharid, welcome.
Yeah, Assalamualaikum to everyone.
Wa alaikum assalam, Muhammad.
Yeah, I know, uh, we're asking questions, is what happened to effort that Al-Mulaj Muhammad gives and doing for self? I spoke about the businesses, the restaurants and the, and the products that we had, the bean pies and all these, all those things. See, the question goes by our young people that don't understand about this, they were asking, well, what happened to that? You know?
You know, I, I, the ma'am mentioned something about this once. He talked about how, say for instance, Fish Supreme. He mentioned how that the brother in Atlanta was doing more fish just as an individual than the, all of those restaurants were doing collectively. So I think it's still here. I don't think it's gone anywhere. And now, just to answer briefly your question, we just don't see, see it as obvious as it was collectively. You know, we had a collective spirit during that time. But now individuals are still doing business and we are seeing great things coming out. I think the Clara Center is a good model right there in Washington DC of a collective effort of people getting together, doing for self, I think, building, et cetera, et cetera, and including others. But I don't, I don't think Muhammad, just briefly, I don't think that it's gone anywhere. It just has, it just has dispersed in a more, uh, I would say broader picture. And I think we have to look at it like that. We didn't, we haven't lost anything.
We lost a whole lot. Let, let me finish. I tell you, we lost a whole lot. Professor had spoken a thousand minutes ago, he mentioned the prisons. So Sister Kalida Agbar, she had, had on her, her program, she, she told us a skit, not just a skit, but these children that were falling in, in the river and drowning. So someone in the community said, let's go upstream and find out what's happening up there. How our children coming down and falling in the rivers, drowning. So I asked her, I said, why don't you invite the chaplain that goes into prisons to come on the program? Or ask some of the people that work in the prison, the guards, to come on the program and tell us what goes on in prison, you know? And what happened? Why, why are so many of our children, grandchildren, great grandchildren, in some cases, in prison? I mean, we brought them up as Muslim in, in a prison, you go to any of these prisons, I asked the guards to come on, chaplains to come on. They'll tell you so many of our people with name, Muslim names that's in prison. So we got to go back and say, why did our children, so many of our children, grandchildren wind up in prison? Which is not the river anymore, they're not falling in the river, they're all in the prison. So what, we have to go and look at that, you know? So, and some, one thing I want to mention also is, uh, you know, is Imam had told us education number one priority. It seems that we didn't follow that because we are speaking about building masjids from the ground up and all of that. What about schools? If we don't have schools, then who is teaching our children? Our children that we grew up, a lot of them coming out, they will not remain Muslim. If you go into a public school, the private schools, they are not gonna remain Muslim. We know that for a fact, they are not gonna teach them anything about Islam in the, in the private schools or the public schools. So that's, and we only got, like I said, I keep mentioning this over and over. We only got five, uh, four, full-time school in this whole community. North, east, south and west, only four full-time schools. And she were trying to sort of, uh, a strong in school. Not saying, not weak in school, but a strong in schools. We need more strong in schools, a after-school program. A lot of our children going to the private, public schools and all. We should have a program after school for them to come into the masjid after school for hour or something and learn about the religion. So that's why I said we, we lost a lot because we haven't followed Imam's leadership that said, education number one priority.
All right, Muhammad, we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, bro. Any comments on anything I just said?
Uh, we gonna go to our next caller, uh, Muhammad. We appreciate it. Thank you. Our next person waiting in the wings over there. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So Michael, who, who we have next? So Michael.
Assalamualaikum, he may be on mute. Uh, thank you. And, and greetings of peace to, to you, Imam, uh, Laisin, Imam Rabani and Michael Hami, uh, to, and to all our listeners, uh, guests. Martha Nyla here from St. Petersburg, Florida, and my, my, uh, in connection with neighborly needs. Uh, my mind was going towards, um, you know, when there's emergencies and I don't know how inclusive the masajis or Islamic centers are in, in need, having something to assist the neighbors in an outreach point around the masjid of, uh, making sure that they have some contact or connection with them as far as, um, their health, their, uh, being able to get to whatever they need beyond what the city perhaps has structured. But is the, you know, that is, is helpful that we know too what's happening. And I was just looking at a form and I said to myself, in light of what's being done today, people being apprehended and, and taken by persons or I don't know if they're pretending, but snatching them, uh, and saying they're part of a, a governmental force. So it, it come to me that, uh, in these instances, just sending a, a number and, and connecting with the, with our neighbors in that way and identifying them, not necessarily getting the regular information that we normally see, you know, your name and, and whatever, how many people in the house, but getting the address. At least starting, being there with that point of interest and address and then apply a number from our format to that address. And then that way we can just check the address and they can inform us, you know, as to how many people, whatever. But our purpose would be to not invade their privacy, but to actually think, be concerned about their, uh, their health in times of emergencies.
Yes, yes ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, Sister Nala. Appreciate it. Thank you. So, uh, you know, these are strategies, these are strategies that, and in another thing, we are, we are, we are all in, we are all, I would say, spread out in different towns, cities, states. And, uh, we can all pick something that we can do, that we can do to make things better. You know, and the, thank you, that's a, that's a great suggestion. I know, I know CWSC has did other things in that regard as well, keeping up with that, but that's a great strategy. But I would mention, you know, here, and I don't like to brag on our town, but we had, we had Iqna Relief people who actually started out in our town. Now they have spread out across the nation do bringing relief in disaster areas. Iqna Relief is very, very, they are certified to go into any disaster area. But, but you know, we, we could say, well, that's not us, but I, I know personally their children, some of the, the leaders who are now in Iqna Relief, their children, them personally, you know, so they are from the Muslim community. And we have to have a broader picture of the Muslim community. We have a full-time school here in Melbourne, up to the eighth grade, full-time. We've been here for years. I think at least, I'm sure six years accredited. It's accredited school and it's, it's because of our involvement with different community, different people in the community. Matter of fact, two, two of our children were instrumental in having the school accredited. Very instrumental. One is, one is not even teaches Arabic in the school from our, from the, from the loins of our, the, our Muslim community that now are helping other Muslim community children as well. So we have to see a broader picture. When we, when we narrow down ourselves, you say five schools, you didn't count my, the school we have here in Melbourne. You know, I, I was very instrumental, I don't wanna brag about it, in making sure it got up and running, right? So we, we haven't lost that. We are, we are gaining schools. There are schools all over Florida here, I mean, in Tampa. Uh, I know, I know Melbourne has, Miami has one, you know? So there are three right here in Florida that I knew of and they're, and they're probably, there's a Hispanic community down in South Florida. And I'm sure they are probably working on education as a priority as well. So, and definitely we have, here we have, we have a Sunday school and a full-time school that's working. And matter of fact, last night at the masjid, some of the students, high school students did presentations in the masjid about the, the Sahabas of the Prophet. They mentioned Bilal, et cetera, et cetera. And you know, they gave a presentation to the whole community, basically that after Ishal prayer. So we have a third, well, on third Fridays, we have family night. Family night at the masjid where children, they come in, they education, they do something, they play. You got a sports area out there, they come to play. So these things are happening, we don't know about them because boy, maybe we not participating in it. It's not happening right under our nose, but it's happening. I remember Imam Yaqia, I mentioned, I'm gonna mention one other thing. Imam Yaqia mentioned, if you're sitting in the window looking out and you see one bird on the post all the time. You could easily think that that's the only bird. So, uh, I better stop out here, I hear someone trying to get in, so, uh.
I, I muted him.
Yeah, yeah. So you could easily assume that's the only bird that you see because you looking out that small window and that's the only bird you see. But, uh, but there are a lot of birds, I mean, especially this time of year. You know, uh, I, 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 I'd be listening to the, the, the society that's, that just can't count the birds. I mean, it's millions of them. So I'll stop there. I don't, thank you, Sister Nala, for sharing something positive we can do. And again, you were saying, making a list of the things that's needed, people that needs help, right?
Yes, yes, you were.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, thanks for that. We appreciate that and, uh, but I was so impressed, um, I think of Michael, you mentioned it when you said that, that they are, they are predators who wait for disasters to actually come in and try to steal people. You know, actually come in and try to exploit people. And we thank Brother Ishmael for the facts on that, uh, forty, four hundred and sixty-five thousand and ninety percent of them are discovered. But yes, that's a large number of people that's still missing. And, you know, and I, and let me say this, I want, I really want this to be understood. We have, we have leaders who try to look to the weaknesses way across in other countries. You know, the Christians are being attacked over here and over there. And we have masjids being burned right here in this country that, uh, nothing is said about it, except it had happened, this was a burnt masjid or this or that. But we are going look, so we are under threat. We are under threat right here. Our religion is not necessarily free as, as religion, religion should be free for God according to what the Quran says and according to what the constitution provides for us. But we have, we have, we have this, this ability to, to, we use language, throw, throw a brick and hide your hand. So you're gonna point out disasters all around the world, missing children here, missing children there. Why they blowing up boats, blowing, destroying life, et cetera, et cetera. And like it's, like it's nothing. So we have, we have problems here that needs to, attention needs to be paid to and we have to make that contribution. We have to point it out. We have to make sure this, that sanity prevails, sanity stays intact. We have to be the ones, the vanguards, the uphold that, those type of principles. So I, I would, I would defer to you, Michael. I think it was you, your turn.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, and Muhammad, I see your hand. Uh, just leave your mic muted till, till we bring you in. Yes, uh, I wanna go back to. Yes, uh, I want to go back to the economic system because when we look at, when we look at the system, in fact, we're talking about a system of economy, flesh sellers, selling, selling, selling human beings for profit. The economic system of Zakat, and the word means to purify, means to get rid of those, those, uh, inhuman qualities from the economy and and to see as an obligation, to see as an obligation, the, uh, the business, for instance, Muslim businesses, uh, 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 becoming safe places for for children to to recognize that they can come to these businesses for protection against predators. Uh, and that kind of, that kind of idea included in the, in, in, in the, uh, the business psychology, the business thinking of 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 the Muslim population is what Zakat is is to represent. Obligations, the e- uh, economic obligations, uh, and 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 the who who qualifies for the help. Uh, for instance, uh, for for, I'm I'm smiling because I was looking for my phone and professor is on my phone and I've got it up against my screen. And I walked away looking all over for my phone and it's right, right in front. Anyway, uh, to to conclude this, my 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 point is that we have problems that come up. And we don't know that they're problems until somebody says, look, you know, we haven't done enough, you know, uh. I I appreciate Mohammed. Sometimes he emphasizes a little longer than I'm comfortable with, but I understand where he's coming from.
Yeah.
We need, we need, and what they say about that, that kind of news, we need a little dab of do you. But sometimes when you don't see, if you're not seeing the action where you are, you know, wait a minute, I need to turn up the volume yet. And we bring, we gonna bring Mohammed back in.
Yes, sir.
Mohammed, come on, unmute yourself. Come on back in.
Yes, I don't mean to be respectful for anyone, but I have to, like, to bring up some things. That's why I mentioned anyone had a comment, what I said concerning our shoes and our American shoe, Muslim shoes in prisons, filling up the, filling up the schools. I mean, filling up the pr- prison of the, uh, prisons.
It's factual. I I I, we accept that it's there, you know, and we have people in those prisons bringing out, some people come out of those prisons, they make good Muslims while they, while they've been in there and been trained. I worked in the prison fifteen years.
I I'm saying that what, I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying why we don't invite the shafers that goes in the prison and make that big, big money in the prison and the guards that work big, making big money in the prison too. While working overtime, they make some hundred thousand dollar a year. Invite someone to come on the program and tell us what happened in the prison and why they're not doing something to help us to stop the people coming to the prison because that would cut off their bread and butter. That's why they don't come on. Maybe they're forbidden to speak about what goes on the prison. So that's why I invited them to come on our program. And Imam Delese, you were saying that we have, uh, uh, schools, Muslim schools in, in, uh, in Florida, the only school we know about is, uh, the school in Miami.
Well.
Let, let, let Imam Adam know about this that we have called, we have a school that listed in the Muslim Journal. Every week, the paper, the schools are listed. And a lot of them are not this, uh, active, actually full-time school. So we actually, speaking of Imam Adam, let him know that there are those schools.
Our school is, our school is not a black school. It's, it's not, we, we, it's a mixed school, Muslim school. The ones I'm talking about, they are mixed schools. That's the point I'm making. They are not just, they are not just exclusively from our community, but we are working in those schools, you know? But we are putting influence in those schools that they, but they may not be, uh, Sister Clara Mohammed named Sister Clara Mohammed School, right? So, uh, you know, that's the point I'm making that we have to broaden the way we see things because things are going on that way beyond what we are seeing. There are so many schools in Texas, all over the place. Muslim schools have been developed from the idea of Sister Clara Mohammed in the first place, right?
So that's why I'm asking the question, why don't you go and speak to Imam Adam? Do you know about one hundred and fifty? Or come and speak to Imam Adam so he can put these schools in the paper? People know about it.
Well, maybe.
What you telling me now?
Maybe someone will pick that up, Mohammed. I'm busy. I am busy. I'm busy. I'm staying busy. I'm limited to what I can do to do something about it. You, you the education man, do something about it.
I talk about it every time I get.
Put it on the table. Thank you, Mohammed.
Thank you.
You put it out there. You put it out there, yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody gotta do something, a little bit from everybody. You have to do, that's how you get things done. Every one person can't do everything. You know, my program is preparing to make it in the land of plenty. I think I'm sharing a lot of information in that regard on the education. We get on education, then maybe the next time we dealing with education, we could do that. Now we owns Zakat and generosity, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, you know, we can just do so much.
Well, you know, the fact that, uh, you know, Mohammed comes forward to put these ideas.
I appreciate it. I really, and I'm not criticizing. I appreciate, I really do.
And and, uh, what is it, what's that saying that we grew up with? The squeaky wheel gets the oil.
Yeah, that's right.
If you don't hear it, you don't know it.
Yeah, I was, I'm glad he does it, really. But just, let's be patient and and know that it's being worked on, I'm sure. So Professor, share some thoughts. We get back to you there. How's our time, Michael?
Uh, yes, uh, wow, right in front of me, ten forty-three.
All right, we heading down, down the stretch, huh?
Yes, sir. We've got seventeen minutes.
All right, Professor, share some thoughts if you will, please. I know you had a lot of time to get armed over there.
What is that? You gotta start feeding people bread and fish.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Doctrine, huh?
Go ahead.
And brain food, rational thinking.
I'm trying to give up some of my responsibilities, Mohammed. I'm telling you, I'm overworked.
And do, do, do what you can and have the spirit of trying to please Allah. And Allah will bring about his plan.
Yo, yes. When the help of Allah comes, right?
Exactly. So, so, uh, this, uh, uh, what we, what we say, keep the faith, baby, huh? And 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 develop, uh, that which Allah blessed you to be, uh, uh, successful at and and good at and and and, uh, and each one teach one, you see? So there's a lot, uh, especially I know that in the, in in the prisons, there are schools. Muslim, there's Islamic schools in the prisons on death row in Florida.
Yes.
But one of, one of the brothers started on, on the T Wing. I think it was T Wing. T Wing is the death row wing, right? And I know, uh, uh, I know, uh, when I, I I used to go down there often. And, uh, everybody respected that, uh, school on, on that top tier, that the brother was teaching the brothers, uh, in each one of the cells. They couldn't go out, but they can, they, they had a way of, uh, communicating with a string, a, uh, uh, paperclip and a note. And they can throw that, they can throw that string all the way down at the end horizontally and throw it down to the tears vertically. Yes. Teaching, huh? So, so there's, there's a lot that, I mean, really, uh, there's so many stories I could talk about, but I, 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 uh, I just relate right now. But, uh, no, this is, this is happening, this is happening. And my name brothers, uh, they have became Muslims. And, uh, and, uh, the, 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 the tragedy of what got them there uh, has been lifted off of their, their, their consciousness and shoulders, uh, uh, shoulders just by being there. Because I told a lot, a lot of them, I said, you know, it's a blessing for you to have been, uh, uh, placed in this, this, this prison. Because if you didn't have that, if you didn't have that experience, you might be, you might have not, uh, ever known the, uh, beauty of Al-Islam. And I meant Caucasians as well as African-Americans.
Yes.
So, so, so a lot, you, you have to, uh, remember, a lot is in charge. And all we have to do is, is, is do our part and do it with gusto. Just don't do it, uh, lackadaisical, but do it with gusto and determination and reach the goal. And it's better to reach the goal shoulder to shoulder, arm to arm. And and remember, we, we, we go to Hajj to let the Hajj know, the people at Hajj know that there are many things occurring all around the world, but we have to come together.
Yeah.
So, so, uh, uh, I can appreciate all of the conversation concerning education. Business, education, because they're all connected.
They all connected.
They're all connected.
Yes, yes. One can't do without the other.
Exactly, you know?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Professor, so much for that. And, uh, and you know, I, I was, uh, I was kind of going off a little bit there and, uh, I need to apologize from, from last week too, when I was talking about our Native American friends. You know, uh, I didn't want to be misunderstood, but I did want us to understand that if, if you don't make use of what God has given you, someone else is gonna come along and dominate you. They're gonna dominate you. So, so you, all of us have to bake the best that you just said, Professor, with vigor and vitality, pursue this life. With vigor and vitality or else someone else is gonna always try to dominate. You know, so it's our, it's obligation on us. Michael, share some thoughts if you would, please.
You brought to my mind something that Imam Mohammed shared. He said, if you don't have a seat at the table, then you're on the menu.
Yes, sir. That's what is correct.
Yeah, simply, simply put, you know, you, you have to be active and engaged in the competition, like what we're doing now.
Yes.
There, there is a marketplace of ideas, all kinds of crap, excuse my language. All kinds of messes being put out into the airwaves, you know, uh, and and, you know, a lot of these, uh, these internet places, you know, they monitor a certain language. And, uh, you know, when you, when you, when a word like retarded is used, you know, the, the flags go up, you know, wait a minute, you can't use the word retarded in connection with this area or that.
That's right.
Or otherwise, we're gonna, we're gonna penalize you, you know? But, you know, these, these, these influences that are oppressive to the human spirit are out there.
Yeah, even the word K I L L. You can't say that word on, on these platform. They, they use language now different, that describes it in a different way.
Yes, that's, that's true. Unalive, I think they use.
Yeah, something like that, right?
Something like that, you know?
Yes, sir. That's right. Because they're monitoring these things and you get thrown out. Yeah.
But what, but, but what happens is you having an alternative, alternative language because words have different levels of impact, you know?
Yeah.
And certain thing, you know, you can't cry out fire in a, in a, in a, in a, in a public place.
Right.
You know, that, that, that's a limitation of your free speech. And we can understand that. Somebody, if there's no fire and you calling on fire, you, you're causing, you're using panic language in, in that environment. But we have, we have, we have a lot of, we have a lot of behavior that says we need to panic. Well, not so much panic, but because there's a difference between react and respond. We have to respond to these issues, these critical issues in a thoughtful manner because they seriously affecting the life and the quality of life.
Yes.
But too many of us have been conditioned. And and that's the nature, look, the nature of, of, of relationships, we begin to, you know, we, we, some of, sometimes we pick up the mannerisms of, of, of each other. We, we pick up a language, language usage of each other, you know? Because the nature of relationships is like that. You're gonna, you're going to, uh, feed one another some of your energy and some of, some of your personality, you know? It is just the nature of things. But there are those that are wise, that understand this operation of human psychology that are, you know, throwing mess in the game that's messing us up. And I'll stop there.
Yes, sir. So we have, we have a great challenge, you know, and I, 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 I really appreciate what Professor reminded us of. You know, we did a program on vigor, vitality, et cetera, et cetera, how, how to, how to bring that to the, to bear on the situation, you know, and, uh, Professor elaborate on that a few minutes because we, we getting short on time, but just what you mentioned about just bringing your whole self to the picture, you know, bringing your whole self to the picture. And all of your talents. Go ahead, Professor, please.
Yeah, so, and believe me, you, if you, if you examine your own self, you'll see you have so many talents that you haven't even touched. That, uh, because you haven't touched them, uh, maybe they became a little dormant. But, uh, take those things that God has given you and and utilize. You don't want to go before Allah. And and you have these great, uh, uh, talents and you haven't used them to help build a life because the, the, the key to living is to, is, is, is to have life, uh, and more abundance for all.
Yes.
So that, that's the thing, and and a lot of us, and if we recognize it, we should, uh, apply it as, as, uh, as carefully and as, uh, uh, astute as, as you can because, uh, a lot of people don't want you to do anything with the talent that you have. So, uh, they will, uh, put, uh, barriers, uh, uh, barriers in front of you to test you to see how, how you're going to, uh, hold up. You know, we have projects that we are working on in, uh, three or four states now in my office. And, uh, you have people who are, uh, uh, just bent on not cooperating with, uh, uh, the basic policies that they claim to be in charge of. So you have to be able to, uh, be patient and persevere because our people are very impatient because they feel that we should have it overnight. We should have a school overnight. Are you working towards anything that would bring about something overnight? Then keep working at it. It'll come.
Yes.
And so don't get, don't get, uh, downhearted. But it should be, uh, uh, understanding that this uplifts me and I'm gonna, uh, march on until victory is won. Isn't that the, the part of the song?
Yes, yes.
Let us march on until victory is won.
That's right.
So, shouldn't we have a greater, uh, say to that than any other community other than, uh, in this society?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And we have it in, we have it in, embedded in our religion. Diversity, diversity, differences, respecting differences, respecting, respecting the talents that each of us have. Every one of us have some talents that's different that we can bring to bear on the situation. And we have to respect the differences of opinions, the difference of, of, uh, focus. And that, uh, and if we do that, we all gonna meet together. As the Quran says that Allah will bring us together. But we do have to be broad in the way we are seeing and working on things. And and everyone has to have a focus. You know, so, uh, and work on the focus, that's, that's your gift, your talent, your gift. I do mine.
That's one point, uh, Imam, is that. Just one point, uh, Imam, is that we should not neglect the, uh, contributions of, of the females.
Yes, they're so important, so important. So important. They are the champions, actually. They are our champions.
That's your mama.
That's right. Thank you, Professor. So how's our time, Michael? We back to you.
We got two minutes. We wanna make the transition and, uh, have, have Martha Nyla. Stop the, uh, YouTube connection so that it can be, you know, we, we, so that our program could be. Properly, properly dialed in.
Yeah, we, and we wanna, we wanna learn how to tag our program. I do anyway. I want to. With that, so that we can keep these topics. Because eventually I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do a couple of books with these programs, uh, uh, eventually.
It's so necessary, you know, to publish, to publish these ideas. It's just like the, uh, the Constitution of the United States. And the Declaration of Independence. When I think about those two documents, I said the. The American public and even the leaders were not even close. To what those, what that language represents. But they published it to, to hold, to hold accountable, uh. The future, but also on themselves, that, you know. It's not mentioned that Thomas Jefferson was quietly working with, uh, uh, individuals like, uh. Henry Berry to, uh, to, 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 to. Influence the slaveholders to give up slavery. It's not, it's not mentioned, but it's there. You know, it's, it's recorded. So I, we, we, we need to, we need to sign off, so we'll have time for Martha to make.
Thank you, Professor. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, dear listeners and participants. We appreciate everyone's contribution. To preparing to make it in the land of plenty. Go ahead, Michael, sign us out.
We're gonna close out with the dua, O Allah. Guide us among those you've guided right. Save us among those you save. Bless us in whatever you give us and deliver us from the harm that you judge. You judge, and none can judge against you, and those whom you befriend are not disgraced, I mean. Martha is in your hands.
Remember Allah, Allah remember you.
Here is there. All right, Hamdulillah.
All right, everyone, I, I am going to stop, uh, let's see here. And at the same time, I was trying to find Muslim journal on.